Good afternoon, everyone. Turn on my mic first. Good afternoon, everyone, again. And welcome to the afternoon session of the November 13th Board of Supervisors meeting. Madam Clerk, what's the item on our agenda?
Mr. Chair, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the October 30th Board of Supervisors Special Meeting, announcing the selection of a police chief. October 30th Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting, November 7th Chamber Legislative Breakfast, and November 7th Powhatan Parkway Project Environmental Impact Study Public Information Meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion or any adjustments? So moved?
Second.
Properly second. All those in favor, send a v. Ayes have it. They are approved. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item two, request to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation. Staff has one request.
Okay.
We would like to postpone item 13D, recognizing Mr. Garrett Hart, recipient of the Virginia Economic Developers Association 2024 Cardinal Award, until the board's regularly-scheduled meeting on December 18th. That is all we have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the change noted?
So moved.
Second. Moved and properly second. All those in favor, send a v. Ayes have it. So ordered. Thank you.
Item three, Everyday Excellence, Dr. Casey.
All right. Good evening, members of the board and the public, and students that are here with us today, and those that are watching nearby. Today, and actually, it was a little bit of a theme of today with Veterans Day just past Monday, as a counting for us to recognize, and I may repeat some of this tonight, too, because it's so worthwhile, of the value that the veterans and the veterans community plays in Chesterfield County. Latest statistics I've seen is that we have over 26,000 citizens who are veterans that live in Chesterfield County. We have over 570 employees between the county and school system. Our three high schools, junior ROTC programs have over 300 students. And again, there's an array of other things that we're doing. In fact, Ms. Selby will be sharing later on today in her HR report that we are V3, which is a veteran-friendly employer. So it goes without saying, there's somebody in this room who is a veteran. If you could guess who it may be. I've only known him as Mr. Mays, and what Mr. Mays says at the juvenile detention center is what you do in the juvenile detention center. And I usually don't give a prologue or prelogue to, preface to, but there's an amazing story of a youth who was at our juvenile detention center and probably learned more and grew up more in that short period of time due to Mr. Mays, so much so that he was inspired to go to our library system and learn how to apply to the military, once he, you know, served his sentence and, and again, made all the amends. And our library system is working with him to get him into the United States Air Force. But it's because of people like Mr. Mays, who's turned one, not just one individual's life around, but many, many more. So without further ado, Ms. Brown will take it from there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Casey, thank you so much for the opportunity to recognize and honor a dedicated and proud veteran who has brought that dedication to country and duty to serve, to his role as an exceptional Chesterfield County employee. Mr. Willie May, Sr., served 22 years in the Army, retiring as a Master Sergeant, and most proud of his time as a Senior Drill Sergeant, which the kids often understand, in Fort Knox, Kentucky. He came to work at the juvenile detention home in 2000, and for the last 15 years, he has served as the Assistant Director. I am so lucky and grateful to serve alongside him. His dedication to the youth we serve is unparalleled. He truly leads by example. He works long hours, he comes in on holidays, weekends, reassuring parents that their children are safe and well cared for. He never forgets that we have other people's children in our custody. He has championed our trauma-informed and trauma-responsive efforts, leading to a 75% reduction in our use of physical restraints over a four-year period. Every child that has come through this detention home knows Mr. May by name, and if you are out in the community, it is not unusual for a young adult to come running up to him and thank him for what he said or what he did for him while he was detained. Mr. May spends hours talking to the kids, and some of the most difficult assaultive and aggressive kids are those he spends the most time trying to listen to and understand. If a child has to be taken to the hospital, it is always Mr. May who goes, often staying until the early hours of the morning and coming right back in to work his, his full shift. And he does that so frontline staff don't have to stay over. He takes tremendous pride in the facility, how it looks, how it's maintained. Culture is very important in a secure residential facility. It's a precarious balance of accountability and support, and he really does model that. Many of our facilities across the state ask, could they, how could they get themselves a Mr. May? So we're very lucky. You'll take him taking out the trash, helping out with food trays, stepping in to give staff a break. If an employee loses a family member, he is the first on the scene with water and food for the family. He is a regular at Petals and Bows, the local florist shop, spending his own money sending flower arrangements to the funeral home on behalf of the detention home. If there's inclement weather, he's the first on the scene to grab the county vehicle and drives all over the Richmond metro area, picking up staff to make sure that we are fully staffed for the day. He's also known, and this is, not everyone knows this, but now everyone will, he's known as a bit of a parent whisperer. So we often get phone calls from parents. I don't know how they get his name, but these are children who've not been detained, or asking if Mr. May could come speak to their teenage son or daughter, and he always obliges. On Veterans Day, rather than spending his much-deserved holiday, he always comes to the detention home. This Monday was no exception, in his uniform, and serves as our guest speaker for our social studies class, encouraging the kids to become productive citizens within their communities. He's partnered with Fort Greg Adams to bring young officers to the detention home to engage with the residents and play volleyball with them. He's a basketball coach for his grandson's team. For years, he's been a motivational speaker at John Marshall High School and a volunteer van driver for the Fourth Baptist Church in Richmond. I'm so glad that his wife of 42 years, this is a theme with him, loyalty dedication, Ms. Wanda May is here as well. And as a military spouse, I think a lot of folks know that, that type of sacrifice and dedication. There's so much more I could say, and so many more examples I could give of who Mr. May is and what he does, and I cannot think of someone who embodies the military's discipline, love for country, and total dedication to the mission more than Willie A. May, Sr. does in his paid and unpaid roles in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Director. It's an honor to him. Supervisors, any comments? Mr. May, okay, excuse me. Go ahead, Mr. May.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, as always. She's always takes care of. Dr. Casey, Mr. Holland, board members, everyone, good afternoon. It's an honor to be here today, representing not only myself, but all veterans, and not only veterans, but families of veterans, because they endure just as much as we do. My wife is here, and I thank my wife through the whole 22 years, all the deployments, all the movements, PCS moves, household goods, moving cars. I'm deployed in Bosnia and Kosovo, and my wife handled all that with two young boys. Well, I got two men now. She handled all that, and I couldn't be successful or wear this uniform without her support. So to all the veterans and their families, feel good to stand, to sit here and represent them, and thank you for this opportunity. And thank Ms. Brown for all she do, taking care of all the residents in the detention home, as well as all the staff. She goes the extra mile to make sure we are taken care of. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Thank you. And now supervisors, any comments? Please.
Thank you so much for everything that you do. That's amazing, and I think we need to, like, replicate you. And it's so important for kids, especially kids that are having troubles, to have a good mentor and someone that they can look up to, and the sooner the better, just because I think that that can maybe change their direction in life and make them be maybe a peer for someone else down the road. So thank you so much for all that you've done for our community, as well as our country.
All right. Ms. Engel.
I just want to thank you for being such a good mentor for those that are in a bad situation and need to make a different, a change to their life, and all that you're doing to assist that. And from the testimony we heard today, you've done a fantastic job, so keep it up, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Engel. Ms. Carroll.
Chair, thank you. I would say thank you as well, but I hope that you're training somebody to do what you do, because it's, it's very rare, quite frankly, to find someone that has the ability to reach children the way you are and the way that you do, including when kids are not even part of the program, their parents are calling up and saying, can you come and speak to my child? So, thank you for that, but I hope you're mentoring somebody and trying to get them to understand how you actually do it.
Very good. Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to add in a little bit in that making the transition from childhood to adulthood is by far the most difficult transition anyone makes in their whole entire life. And what makes it easier is having a role model that is able, someone that steps up and says, hey, let me show you how it's done. And to be able to do that is so important. In psychology, they call it object relations. Who is going to be the anchor in the storm? And what you're able to be is an anchor in the storm to get them through what they're going through and to emerge different men and women. So, thank you.
Mr. May, we're so fortunate to have you here in Chesterfield County. I met you many years ago on my many visits to the Juvenile Detention Center. And you said something to me that was really striking about dealing with young people and young men that was very enlightening. And so, I greatly appreciate that, and I knew you had the psychology of it, how to interact with young men, young women as well. And so, we, I applaud you, and thank you not only for being the distinguished Sergeant, Major, Master Sergeant here, but also your service to the many families and the veterans and others you've touched throughout the county. You have been a true asset. You are what makes Chesterfield stand out, not only in the region, but in the state and the nation for that matter. And so, I applaud you, sir, and thank you for everything, and I thank your wife as well, who's here with you. I thank you as well for all you do to support him and all he does. He does far more than I thought. I just saw you at the detention center, and so I didn't realize you did so much more, but yes, you do, and we applaud you and thank you. And happy Veterans Day to you, sir, and hope you will enjoy this Veteran Week. This is a Veteran Week for you, not a day, but thank you for being here first and foremost, and thank you for all you do for the young people you touch and how you impact them with the psychology that you use, and you know how to impact young men. Thank you so much. And thank you, Madam Director, for being here as well to present him, and we salute you, sir. Let's give him a hand, too. I'm gonna salute you. All the best, all the best, in your doing and going. All the best.
Item four, Work Sessions, A Transportation Update, Ms. Adams and Ms. Worley.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Casey, Chairman Holland, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be with you this afternoon to give you an overview of transit service in Chesterfield County. Today, I'm here to talk about where we are and where we're going. The existing service that we have in Chesterfield County, as well as any pilot projects, our essential transit infrastructure, and any future, future expansion that we have. Let's talk about our existing service here in review. In the fall of 2023, we adopted an alignment for our North-South Pulse. January of 2024, we launched our local service on Malothean Turnpike with the 1A extension. In March of 2024, we launched a Cloverdale Link service, and I'll talk about all of these a little bit later. And this summer, we prioritize our service with our Transit Strategic Plan. Sorry, I'm going backwards. I apologize. So ridership, existing Chesterfield service, the 1A, and I know this is a little tough to, to see. The 1A monthly, average monthly ridership is 57,611 for this year. For the 3B, the average monthly ridership is 43,456. And then our 82 Express, our average monthly ridership is 1,713. You look at the, the charts and you notice that September is a little bit less, had fewer ridership than the previous months, is because we had fewer weekday schedules in August, and ridership still tends to remain positive, even though, see that slight decrease there. The 1, Route 1A, the Malothean Chesterfield Town Center route. This was a local service expansion that expanded from downtown Richmond to Walmart Way, and it runs every 30 minutes from 5:00 a.m. until midnight. It travels along Hull Street, Belt Boulevard, and then Malothean Turnpike. Some of the key destinations is Johnston Willis Hospital, Chesterfield Town Center, Walmart, and Sam's Club. The service launched in January of 2024, and it's being paid for with a demo grant. One of the other things I wanted to point out about this service, if you see on the next slide, it talks about the annual ridership is up 46%. And I went stop by stop for some of the ridership, and some of our highest ridership is, of course, Chesterfield Town Center. For the month of September, we had over 1,090 people get off at that, that bus stop. For Walmart Parking Lot, we had over 2,300 people get off there. For Malothean, Johnston Willis Drive, we had about 311. And then for the Boulders Parkway on Malothean, we had about 665 people exit there. So, they are definitely utilizing the service. The Cloverdale Link service, what is Link? Link is a microtransit service that services areas that might not support traditional fixed route buses. We utilize a van. It is on-demand, curb-to-curb, and it's also app-based, so you can use your app to request the service. And if you don't have the app, you can still call our customer service to request the service. It's zone-based, so it only transports people within the certain zone that we have. Some of the points of interest for the Cloverdale Link service is, of course, Chippaham Mall, and that location connects to our fixed route service, the 1C, so you can continue your trip downtown or anywhere else throughout our service area. We also service the library, the Manchester YMCA, and Latinos in Virginia Empowerment Center. This service was launched in March of 2024, and it's funded with a three-year pilot from our DRPT Trip Grant, as well as our ARPA funding. And this is, this is some of the ridership. As you can see, the ridership has grown the months of July and August. It did fall off a little bit in September, so we will be watching to see how October, we don't have the October figures yet, but those should be out shortly. Essential Transit Infrastructure, what is that? It is intended to provide comfortable, convenience, accessibility, safety, and dignity to our riders. In 2022, our board committed to a goal of having a bench or a shelter at 75% of our bus stops in the next five years. We are also looking at landing pads for us to be ADA compliant, and we work very closely with Chesterfield to install the infrastructure that is needed so that we can install the shelters or the benches with the trashcans. The Route 82 Express. Currently, that route services Commonwealth 20, and it's an average of 26 passengers per trip, and the average monthly ridership is about 1,700 people on that express route. We are looking to expand that. The future expansion for the Route 82 is to have an additional stop at the Chesterfield Career and Technical Center, and we are evaluating demand for that, and we anticipate that implementation between one and three years before we finalize that. And that would be an additional miles average of 4,558 annually, with an annual operating cost, cost increase of over $55,000 for that. The Route 3B. So currently, the Route 3B is our, it travels down Route 1 to Bright Point, and it is a local service that was, that was launched in March of 2020 as a Route 111. And that was paid for with a two-year demo grant. After the two years, we merged into the 3B, which was an existing service from Richmond, for better access to our entire network with no transfers. That service currently has an average of 38 passengers per trip, and the average monthly ridership, as I said earlier, was 43,456. Now, with the extension, we are trying to extend to Colebrook, which, the purpose of that is to serve a new development for affordable housing, and we are waiting the, the completion of the development before we can implement that service. But you can see up here that we will be traveling an additional 14,785 miles annually, which is a little 1.65 miles per round trip, and it will be about 30 trips per day, Monday through Saturday. The 1A, the 1A to Chesterfield. So what this is, is we want to expand to Westchester Commons from Walmart Way to Malothean, on Malothean Turnpike. Some of the points that will happen with this is it will also provide a connection to a Power Tan Link service. Currently, they have a link, and this would allow the Power Tan residents to also access the rest of our service. There is additional operating cost of over $1,295,000, and this is projected to be implemented in the next one to three years. The 95 Express. We currently run a 95 Express, and we previously stopped at Bright Point, going and coming, so that we could drop off or pick up anybody there before going to Petersburg or to Richmond. And we want to resume that service. So it would be an additional express service stop at Bright Point Community College, and it's about three miles per round trip, so that's about how long it takes to get off the interstate service Bright Point and jump back on. And the annual operating cost is about $75,000. And currently, we are evaluating demand for that to see when we can implement it, but hopefully within the next couple of years for that. Planning for the future, our North-South Pulse. So we adopted an alignment in October of 2023 for the North-South, and it will be done in, in two phases. Phase one, as you can see, is about 12 miles, and that would cover from Azalea and Henrico through the downtown Richmond area to Stone Bridge in Chesterfield. And then phase two, we would go further north and south. It would go all the way to Virginia Center Commons and then south, all the way to Chesterfield Town Center. Phase one is projected to be implemented in about five to 10 years, and phase two, 10 to 15 years. So currently, we are doing our environmental analysis in our station locations, which could take up to two years. And that is the, the status of service in Chesterfield County. I will answer any questions.
Any questions, supervisors? Go ahead, in order you like.
I have a quick question in that. How do you measure when people are getting off, or how do you do ridership? Like, how does that happen?
We have people, people counters on our vehicles, so they're at the doors at each entrance. We have two doors on each bus, so it automatically counts them.
So as they're walking through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm hoping that we can continue to expand some of these things, because I think it's, it's obvious that it's a need that has not been met here, that, and then people are using it, and especially like to get to shopping and doctor's appointments and places that they, they can't normally go if they don't have a second car or even a car. So, I greatly appreciate that, and I am excited to see that that will be extending all the way down to Westchester. That's, that's awesome. I know we've talked about something connecting in between Hull and, and Midlothian would be an awesome thing to look at, so.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, that is something that we're studying, so yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments? I know Mr. Engel serves on the board, and he looks out for us and you, of course, in this regard. Any other questions, supervisors, or comments? It's my understanding that the service is at no cost to the riders. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. Currently, we, it is zero fare. That is correct.
Zero fare.
And our board is committed to continuing that, so we are looking at different ways to, to make that happen, to continue that. Currently, it's being funded through a grant, and we are looking at that in addition to other partnerships and advertising to continue.
Thank you so very much for all you do. Your leadership has been excellent.
Thank you.
I, I did download the app, by the way. I'm just waiting to ride it. It just hasn't failed itself yet, but I will ride.
Yes. Well, if you know if you would like an escort, I'll be happy to come.
Thank you. We appreciate your being here. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Have a wonderful afternoon.
You as well, thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Back up, Mr. Rusley. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holland, Dr. Casey, members of the board, for having me here this afternoon to provide an update on VDOT Chesterfield Residency's operations. So I'll briefly cover maintenance services. I know we talk a lot about that at previous meetings, so I'd like to touch more on the other topics, but we'll talk about VDOT's paving program, snow removal operations as we enter the winter, and then also updates on a few VDOT-administered projects impacting Chesterfield County. So to touch on maintenance services, this is just a, a summary list of the services that our residency offers for maintenance on VDOT roadways in Chesterfield County. So you can see there, mowing, drainage improvements, pavement repairs, signs, tree trimming, all of the above. We do have, in 2019, VDOT did a comprehensive review of our maintenance and operations program, which determined a need to, I'll say, get back to the basics of maintenance and do more preventative maintenance and planned maintenance, and being less reactive to just citizen complaints or things of that nature, but really trying to get ahead of those maintenance items before they become concerns expressed by citizens. As a result of that comprehensive review, VDOT established maintenance performance metrics, so there are 10 maintenance items that we are expected to perform on, on an annual basis, and there are best practice frequencies associated with those items. So this is a list of those items here, but things like mowing, frequency of three times per year, pipes, we're expected to clean out a certain percentage of our inventory on an annual basis. So those are the types of measures that we are looking at on an annual basis in order to keep up with our maintenance on VDOT roadways. So to touch on paving program, I'll, I'll talk about our pavement management targets. Addition to maintenance metrics, we also have metrics for our paving program as well, our historical lane mile accomplishments in Chesterfield County, and then share the VDOT paving status map. So to start with pavement management targets, the second column there, the target percent sufficiency, is established, it was established by the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Those are the percent sufficiencies we're trying to reach on the different classifications of roadway, from interstates down to low-volume secondaries. So you can see it's 82 for both interstates and high-volume primary routes, 75% for low-volume primaries, 82% for high-volume secondaries, and 60% for low, low-volume secondaries. I did include sufficiency data for all of Richmond District, all 14 counties for 2023 and then 2024, so you can see how we've changed. We've increased a little bit in the secondary, low-volume secondaries, trying to hit that 60% target. And then the last column, of course, is Chesterfield County specifically. So you'll see, of course, we have catching up to do on our low-volume secondary roads, and that is where we are focusing our paving efforts, which I'll show on the next slide. So this is our historical lane mile accomplishments in Chesterfield County specifically, from 2021 to what we have planned for 2025, for next year. So you'll see, we've really put the emphasis on those low-volume secondaries, with that being the most lane mileage that we target on an annual basis since 2021. That's really been our focus in Chesterfield County. I should also note that, that these lane mile, lane mile accomplishments are for any treatment type, so we do a wide range of treatment types, from surface treatment to slurry to full mill and fill pavement operations. And it's important for us to have a balance of those different treatment types, so that roads that maybe aren't in as bad of condition now, we keep them in that condition by doing some of those preventative slurry, slurry treatments or Cape Seal treatments. So we do evaluate that as well, as we're determining treatment types. So this is just a, a picture of the statewide paving state, status map. This is a, an external map. It's available to anybody on our GIS system, where folks can track what roads are on the schedule for paving, and then the status of. schedule for paving and then the status of it as construction is ongoing. This year, we're wrapping up our paving schedules. All of our fixed completion dates are later this week, actually. So most of our paving schedules are now wrapping up for 2024 and we're advertising contracts for the '25 paving season currently. So to touch on snow removal operations, as soon as we enter into a snow removal situation, VDOT runs on a 24/7 operation, 12-hour shifts. And in Chesterfield County, we have approximately 185 pieces of equipment between equipment that VDOT owns, our state forces, as well as contractors that we've signed up to support us this season. We're still signing up contractors, so that number is increasing as folks trickle in. To touch on pre-treatment, we do brine our priority routes and some bridges in advance of snow events. So all of our interstates, primary routes, all primary routes in Chesterfield County, as well as some high-volume secondaries. Courthouse Road basically acts like a primary. It carries so much traffic, so that's one example of a road that we will also brine in Chesterfield County. So we do that when conditions are right, when the event will not begin as rain, to prevent that bonding of the snow to the pavement. Makes it a little bit easier for us to remove it when the snow does start to fall. And then when we're removing snow, we do it in a priority designation. Interstates are highest priority, followed by primaries and high-volume secondaries. And then we'll get into low-volume secondaries and subdivision streets after that. Dependent on the snow total accumulation, VDOT does have a goal of clearing priority one routes within 24 to 48 hours after the end of a snow event and between 36 to 72 hours for secondary roads after the end of a snow event. That's our goal there. I wanted to draw attention to this. We haven't had a whole lot of use for it in the last couple of years, fortunately. But VDOT does have a snowplow tracker that's an external feature. If we are in a level three storm or above, this tracker gets turned on so folks can see where all of our snow plows, both our VDOT forces and our contractor forces, are located throughout the county. There's nothing on there in this example, except the blue are our traffic cameras. So folks can also see traffic cameras through the same app to see road conditions during a snow event. Wanted to touch on one new addition for our snow operations this year, and that is a new chemical storage building that has been constructed in the interchange at I-95 and Roughen Mill Woods Edge area. This, the design of this facility began in August 2021, started construction about a year ago and are working to obtain an occupancy permit currently. Hopefully, we'll have it soon and we can start moving salt into that building. This facility is going to support our interstate and limited access roadways in Chesterfield County, so 95, Chippenham, 288, Powite Parkway. It's run by our interstate maintenance partners. They can also use it to supplement some of my facilities if we start to run low on chemicals. But it is the third-largest chemical building in the Commonwealth of Virginia. It'll hold 9,000 tons of salt and will have 60,000 gallons liquid brine capacity. It's very hard to see, but in the bottom right picture, there is a Chevy Suburban parked in the very back corner of the building for size reference. You can see it from 95, so we get lots of questions about what it is and that's that new facility. So wanted to touch on just a few VDOT-administered projects impacting Chesterfield County, either in construction or upcoming. So I'll start with I-95. So between Route 288 and Route 10, we currently have a construction project to build an additional travel lane on both northbound and southbound I-95 between those two exits, about 1.2 miles. Kukoseen is our contractor. They've been working on this since July of this year and their fixed completion date on that contract is November 2026. It's a $29 million project and currently, what you see out there is mainly tree clearing and earthwork occurring behind the concrete barriers. All that's visible from 95, so lots of folks are driving through that work zone. Dundas Road, Route 641 Bridge. The scope of this project is replacement of the bridge. The bridge that was currently there was built in 1961, so that bridge is being replaced and will have an additional pedestrian sidewalk on the bridge as well. That project was, went to construction in March of this year and has a fixed completion date of April 2026. There is currently a detour in place for, sorry, for eastbound traffic over the bridge. Westbound traffic can still travel over the bridge and there's a detour in place for eastbound traffic. We anticipate that detour will likely be lifted about a year from now when the project reaches substantial completion. Project is not located in Chesterfield County, but certainly impacts a lot of Chesterfield residents and drivers. Route 288 Northbound Hard Shoulder Running Project. This is a project between the Route 711 Huguenot Trail exit in Powhatan County and the Route 6 Patterson Avenue exit in Goochlin County, spanning the James River on 288. The scope of the project is to do pavement improvements to the existing right shoulder of the northbound lanes and all of the ITS infrastructure associated with supporting, using that shoulder during peak AM, peak hours during the rush hour. That project is currently in design and we anticipate that it'll go to advertisement in fall 2025.
Mr. Chair. Just wanted to make a note that, just wanted to make a note that this is one of the projects that were approved by the regional CVTA. And it also had an $8 million match, I think a technology match from the state, which is why we made it a priority to get it done and I'm glad to see that's moving forward.
So I was driving in Boston a couple of years ago and they have this there and it scared the hell out of me because no one told, excuse me, but they did tell us that, I mean, there's no like clear sign saying that all of a sudden people are just flying by on the, so is that, these signs are going to be visible very clearly?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Yeah, it'll involve lots of clear signage to distinguish whether that lane is open for travel or not.
And that's basically just for like high travel times for rush hour?
Yes, so for northbound 288, we would anticipate the morning peak hour being the highest demand.
Okay.
And that's when it would be open to traffic.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair, there's a proposal for a matching project for the southbound lanes, but I don't think it's currently funded.
That's correct. Goochlin County has applied for a smart scale project for the same project on the southbound lanes, but haven't determined whether they've received that funding. But that is correct. And then just to touch on Fall Line Trail, so VDOT has a design-build project that's been advertised for the section of the Fall Line Trail from Patton Park in Petersburg to Route 10 in Chester. This design-build project was advertised for bidders in October, so we're currently in procurement determining who to award that to. But we anticipate awarding in spring 2025 and depending on that award, could possibly see construction in late 2025 or early 2026 from that design-build project. And just a few resources that I referenced today for your use and I will always add our 1-800 customer service center number. But those are my updates if anybody has questions.
Questions, comments? Ms. Worsley.
So on your chart of miles covered for the last year and then next year, it had zero on your primary low volumes. What kind of road would that be, a good example of a road?
A lot of institutional routes, so entering some, we've got some in Virginia State University routes and they're institutional routes. They are primaries, but they're lower volume. That would be an example of a route like that.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Carroll.
Chair, just a comment for the community in a whole is, you know, the CVTA approved funding for the Fall Line Trail and I think it was the end of the second year in existence, I think it was 2021 into 2022. And it's good to see the different sections of it coming out of the ground, but you know, for the community, these things don't happen overnight. You know, it takes not just a matter of getting the funding, but then getting the design, build and awarding of contracts. But we're making great progress, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Carroll serves on the CVTA for us as a board member, by the way, as well. So it's pretty knowledgeable events there. Mr. Engel.
I just want to thank VDOT for recognizing that two times a year, cutting the grass wasn't enough and having a third, at least a third cut a year. And didn't mention it, but usually pick up the trash most of the time right before you cut. So adding that is, that's great. Getting some more paving done in some of our secondary streets is just imperative and I'm glad that that's been recognized and it looks like there's a higher priority on it than there was in the past, so thank you for that.
All right. Any other comments? I just want to thank you, Ms. Worsley. We appreciate your being here and all the work you do. I have one question, however, that I've never asked before. How often do you receive thank yous for your work?
Not frequently. Not as often as the complaints, but they're very welcomed every time we do receive them.
Well, thank you for that. And thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
As we transition, I want to also comment that we have model county government today. We had a luncheon today as well and students. And I understand it's over 60 students and some are seated in the audience here with us, model county government. And I ask them to learn as much as their teacher has been teaching. And so I hope they learn a lot more and ask many questions of officials you see in your local government. And that's one of the purposes of local county, model county government is to allow students opportunity to see firsthand what goes on. Thank you. I wanted to mention that earlier, but now it's never too late. But anyway, thank you, Madam Clerk. What's the next item?
B, External Audit Report, Mr. Churchman.
Thank you. Mr. Churchman, I can see you. Good, thanks for being here. We always good, it's always good to see you, especially this time of year. Why not? My first question, I'm gonna ask you a question already. I hope our internal controls are in place and functioning.
What we were required to test, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I presented to the AFC last week our audit results under the audit standards. And for those of you who weren't part of the committee or weren't present, there are certain audit standards that are required to be discussed in the results of those audits to the audited and those charged with governance at the end of each audit, regardless of what type of entity you are. And they are the standard across all entities. So as you're gonna imagine, there are some standards that are really applicable to corporate Americans, some standards that are applicable to governments. And so I went through all of those standards, applicable and not applicable to your committee last week. What you want to hear from me is that I presented to them that we have provided in the very thick document you have, six or seven pages of paper, that are ours. Those are your financial statements prepared by your finance department. We provided our reports and every one of our report is what you want to hear from your auditor. It's what we call unmodified, which means we found that the presentation of the disclosures and the amounts in your statements are in all mature respects fairly presented and of course, generally subject to accounting principle. We found no federal or state compliance matters to make you aware of. And Mr. Holland, as you know, there's also a thing called Yellow Book, the government auditing standards, which has us look at compliance and also internal controls and we found no matters there to report to you also. So basically, for lack of a better auditor, a clean bill of health for our last years. Now, I know I'm speaking on the history. I know you're gonna have a financial update, which will talk about your current and future. But from my perspective, what you want to hear from me is what you just heard from your auditor, that we found that the books we were provided to audit and the presentation, and it takes a lot to put all that together. The finance department does just incredible work getting us, not only getting us everything we need, but providing everything that's required by generally subject to accounting principles to be presented in that thick document to be able to have it to you. You're actually the first large entity I'm with this year because you got your books together and got your statements together for us to audit and for me to present to you today.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments, board members? Any questions or comments? One question, yes, please.
So you audit a lot of counties in Virginia?
Myself personally, yes. At my firm, yes.
Your firm. Can you just kind of quantify that for how many, would that be approximately?
I'm not good with numbers. No, I'm joking. I'll give you a spectrum. My firm and myself, I audit Fairfax County, Loudoun County, I've audited Arlington, who audited Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Suffolk, Henrico, your peer to the north of you.
In fact, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Miller is, again, these firms also with all the requirements of government auditing, remember, there's lots of regional authorities and commissions and other boards that they are also a participant in. So when you're saying, you know, we're the first of the large local government, sometimes you could have a very small regional organization that's much, much easier to audit.
Correct.
And actually, while I have the microphone, I have to recognize the person sitting behind me.
Please do.
Who is the Director of Accounting and none of this would happen without her and I see the talented staff all over the place here and they are the ones who do the wonders of it all. Not to make it easy for them, but the reason why they're here is because they do make it easy, because they do everything right 365 days a year.
Thank you very much for acknowledging that, Ms. Wilson, who's a Director of Accounting and we appreciate your hard work. We in this county, as long as I've been here, have expected excellence and you've delivered and you've delivered and we appreciate it so very much. Was, I missed the last meeting, was there any input from the internal audit staff relative to this audit, sir?
They do assist us in looking at the required procedures over the sheriff's office and those procedures will be, as we were, normal timeline will be issued in the upcoming couple of weeks. But they do assist us as, lack of a better term, teaming with us to make sure that those procedures by the Virginia Sheriff's Manual and also the Auditor Public Council get looked at each year. And Mr. Miller, I want to make sure I answered your questions sufficiently. I wasn't trying to evade the number.
Actually, it was kind of leading to another question, which was around, you know, what percentage of the counties that you audit meet to the level? Of course, I don't want you to mention any other county you named, but I was curious to know what percentage meet the level that Chesterfield County meets? And the reason I'm asking that question is I think that there's some measure of skepticism in the community as far as whether we're good managers of their money. We're gonna be getting into that conversation, but this is a big part of that is to say, are you, what you're seeing, that kind of stuff. So I'm kind of curious to know, compared to other counties, what are you seeing? And do you walk away from this and go, you know, I just don't see any better than Chesterfield County?
I want to make sure I phrase, I am, we're charged in not doing what I would call an operational audit. Are you using your money the way you should be using it? We're charged with, you used it, was it recorded properly and was it accounted for properly? So for example, in your book there, in your act for, there are several budget actual statements. Now, the auditing standards don't require us to do very much work if at all over those because we're not required to audit a budget. But I do look at it to see if, you know, did you go over budget in an area? And if you did, I might ask the question, why? And a lot of times, there's very logical reasons. Something, a program got bigger than what's anticipated and the timing of it and amendments came later in the next fiscal year because you realized it had grown or frankly, maybe shrunk from year to year. The only way you can really, I'm trying to say, you can judge entities by what opinion they get. You got an unmodified opinion. It's a top, it's a triple A of opinions that you get on the presentation of your financial statements. Not all entities get that. Some entities get, we have varying levels in the audit profession of, are your numbers absolutely on par with generally subject to accounting principle? Are there areas where maybe they're not? And then that opinion would be not unmodified. It would have some, what would be called modifications to it. I'm not trying to, it's just the way the words work in the accounting profession. It's hard to say, I can't really judge one against another operationally because again, I'm not doing an operational audit. I'm doing actually frankly, a historical audit. I'm looking at your numbers that have already passed. You're already well into the next fiscal year and your budget year and so forth and working on operations. I will say you can judge by looking at the opinions given from one entity to another and that is both, I would say, financial and also if there's compliance matters that are noted. Some entities don't have any compliance matters. That, great. Some entities will have something that's compliance matter, whether it be federal compliance with a school program or a VDOT program and so forth, or state compliance. So it's, you can't So it's, you can't really, you can't really put everybody on a grid and say, okay, they gotta, you can't, they got this opinion or that opinion, but then you can't say, well, they had two compliance matters. Well, maybe that was a unique one-off matter. They're still a tremendous entity, but they had a one-off matter that this year just happened to come up, and it hasn't been there for years and years and years. So it's hard for me to, the only, the only, the only, the only thing we can say is, we've audited you, we've given you the opinion we feel is accurate, and that's what you want to hear from your auditor. I don't sit in front of every county and city in the state. I only audit some of them. But I will say that you can look at their financial reports, you can look at how their, how their reports are being, for lack of a better term, graded, unmodified versus modified, compliance qualifications versus no compliance matters and so forth, and make your own judgment there. And I understand you, I'm a citizen of the county. Now, I obviously know a lot more than a lot of citizens, because I do this for a living. I don't know a lot about what other people, medical items, I don't know a lot about medical items. I don't know a lot about what other people do in their profession. So I understand what you're saying, when there's skepticism, whatever word you might want to say, that, you know, is the county using their money properly or not. I can only say that you paid 20 bucks for something, that's what I saw was, went out the door, that's what got recorded into the right account, and therefore, that's what's in the right expense line item on your financial statements, and so forth. Does that kind of help? I'm not trying to evade you at all, it's just kind of a...
I definitely wanted to kind of focus that on that. So that's what I'm going after. I mean, on the front page, I think of today's Times Dispatch, there were millions of dollars that walked out of a local tobacco company. And so, you know, it took years to figure that out. And it is one of those things where that's not occurring here. Chesterfield recognizing that one is a government entity and one's a private business. But yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Carroll?
We like to talk sometimes in simplistic terms, and I mean that because, quite frankly, not everybody's an accountant, right? But the simplest way to say this is, is that our people follow the rules, and they documented it the way they're supposed to. Is that a simple clarification?
In accordance with the parameters I work under. Again, I don't check your budget parameters, for example.
But for reporting purposes, as an agency, as a government agency, there are rules and regulations that we, and best practices to follow. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And if you get an unmodified opinion, it means, quite frankly, of all the transactions that the county did last year, you didn't find one that said, this is messed up, which could lead to not getting an unmodified opinion.
Correct, yes, sir.
That's pretty impressive, in my opinion, when you look at how much money the county spends, taxpayer dollars spends every year, not just salary compensation, but all of the different programs, whether it's, whether it's public safety, whether it's teachers, whether it's libraries, you pick one. And all of the different purchases being documented correctly, and our accounting staff holding everybody accountable to those standards, I think is pretty amazing, quite frankly.
Yeah, I concur. Any other comments on that? As a CPA, I can tell you, they do an outstanding job with regard to that, and you won't see Chesterfield County on the front page for this, Dr. Miller. But thank you so very much for this outstanding report, and for your diligence and your hard work. I know you have been here for a number of years, and your expertise is certainly evidenced by what you do and how you review the details thereof. So we again applaud everyone who worked on this, Director of Finance, Accounting, if you will, and others involved in this process. Thank you so very much for that. And for presenting to this board today as well. Thank you so very much.
C, financial update. Mr. Harris and Mr. Durkin.
Mr. Chairman, this board, presentation today is divided into two parts. The first third of it is really a summation of some materials presented at Audit Finance last week. And again, no, no actions requested the board today, but really just sort of getting you up to speed, caught up with where we are, events over the last couple of months. So let Mr. Durkin lead that, and then the back two-thirds, really, I think ties into some of Mr. Miller's commentary just a few minutes ago. So we will get to that in due course. But I will let Mr. Durkin start off here with the calendar.
All right. We presented this Audit and Finance last week. It's something that we continually talk about as we move through this process, you know, aside from the tree there, 'tis the season, as they say. First part of our budget kickoff had to happen in September, October, more of an internal process with departments. November we're in right now, we are currently working through as a result of the Act for the fiscal year 2024 year-end position. My team this week will be starting on the first round of fiscal year 2025 projections, and then we'll be coming to you, Mr. Harris and I, over the next month or so, going through where we see fiscal year 2026. So November's always a fun time for us. We're kind of juggling three fiscal years in that one-month to two-month parameter, moving on to December. And that is when you will all set the maximum tax rate that will go into effect with part of fiscal, for calendar year 2025, as covering part of fiscal year 2026. There will be a vote on how to allocate the year-end funds for fiscal year 2024 on your December board item. And I'll go into the community contracts process in a few slides, but that will also be finishing up for applicants in December.
Yeah, and one quick clarification, that the max tax rate, we have done it as a matter of practice the last couple of years, as early as December. There's nothing that ties you to that. We will be bringing you information and briefings between now and then, and, you know, we can establish when that happens. But that's an action that will be slated for as early as December, but certainly, we can accommodate that as well in January.
Yep. Really quick, moving on to 2026 budget topics. Number one priority, as always, is, I'm gonna get one back later on this one.
Susan Wilson's watching us.
All right, I'll speed up, Susan. Number one priority, as always, is fiscal stewardship, striking that right balance between the established priorities identified by the board, as well as running the organization on a day-to-day basis. Blueprint, this upcoming budget cycle for fiscal year 26 will be the first one where the strategic plan dovetails with the budget, both on the operating and CIP. So we are working through all the department budgets through that new strategic plan lens, as well as looking at performance measures. Efficiencies, we have sent memos out to department directors, encouraged, as always, it's something we do year-round, to pursue and promote innovation in their practices, timely, as I say, with the introduction of the newly adopted strategic plan. That said, three key topics are coming ahead that we see as part of fiscal year 2026. Compensation, you'll hear more from Ms. Martin Selby and our team on HR on that topic. Capital, both on the county and schools front, and then schools as a topic in general. We have begun to meet with you and your school board peers respectively, and Matt and I are working hand in glove with school finance team as well as we move throughout this budget season. Really quickly, right now, there is a public input period for the Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan. There was a recorded community meeting on October 17th that is available online for people to view. Our next community meeting is scheduled for February, with the exact date to be determined, but there is a public online portal that people can go and input as part of that process. So just wanted to put that out there, so that people were aware and could write their input on the consolidated plan. Coming back to the community contracts, the application period for those entities is open, is live, if you go to chesterfield.gov/budget. This year, we have synced up the timelines with the CDVG and home application processes. Typically, there was a kind of two-month overlap between them, but now they are both open for the same period, closing on Friday, December 13th. And that's a screenshot from the budget website, where people can go and apply as well.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Are these changes from last year to this year, like sooner or later, I'm trying to get a feel for the calendar and what's transpiring?
It was on the community contracts, please?
Yeah, in the part of this, what's changed significantly from last year to this year?
The message here is simply that it's the alignment of the windows for the application, because there are a lot of agencies that consider both paths, and I think it helps streamline their decision-making and staff's receipt of that information. So it's a coordinated effort, you know, we don't want any overlap in those programs, and I think this helps us do that. The first calendar, the first slide, I think the process, you know, feels generally like it does every year, no major modifications. It's just sort of a good reminder for you all in public of where we are.
Okay.
And then some other quick one-liners, an update on our long-term liabilities, with the fiscal year 2024 period having ended. The supplemental retirement programs, just for context, the both programs are closed to new participants, but both plans are in a good state. Just for some context, we like those funded statuses for both plans to be above 80%. For the county, that's currently 81.8%, and then for the school system, you can see they're at 97.1%, a large part due to the infusion that you all made to the school SRP program with fiscal year 2021 year-end surplus dollars.
I think that bears repeating. So that, that program was in the, you know, in the twenties plus or minus. And so, you know, there's a lot of questions this time of year about how year-end funds are reinvested. You know, you made a collective decision with the school board to invest what was a larger-than-normal surplus because of the COVID, you know, phenomenon. We invested it in that program, and you can see the success that it's had, and it's been a joint venture with them, almost 100% funded, it's really unheard of in terms of a long-term liability like that. In addition, that cleared out operational space, capacity space in the school budget that allowed for the two middle school projects to move forward. So I think it's probably the best example of all time of taking, you know, year-end dollars and investing them in a way that lowers ongoing costs and, you know, speeds up needed infrastructure. So just, you know, as we talk about that topic a little bit this month, but more so next month, I think that's just good backdrop.
Moving on to the second bill for tax relief for elderly and disabled program adjustments. Typically, you would have seen on your board packet tonight an item to set a public hearing to make adjustments to that program. But you all adopted a resolution earlier this year that allows us to make automatic adjustments, so that the net worth and income components of this program automatically adjust to keep in line with the social security cost of living adjustment. That figure for tax year 2025 is 2.5%. So both components of that program will be going up by the 2.5% to make sure that no one loses out as a result of that inflationary adjustment. There are some additional adjustments that are being made as effective of January 1. We discussed this as we went through the budget process for fiscal year 2025. You can see those listed there. One of the things I do want to point out is, you know, we're gonna talk about some financial trends. This program, the cost increase has been quite significant over the last few years. The fiscal year 2024 cost was $19.1 million. That was up from a shade over $16 million in fiscal year 2023, so quite a large jump in one year. For fiscal year 25, we have about $19.2 million budgeted, based on that 19.1. I'm pretty fair to say that it will exceed that 19.2 that we have budgeted for fiscal year 2025. And then just over the last four years, you've made some pretty impressive adjustments to this program. The brackets have increased to 22% for both the income and net worth components of this program over the last four fiscal years alone. Then finally, on tonight's agenda, you will see setting a public hearing to be held in December to reallocate for the ARPA funds before the December 31st federal deadline for that program.
Hopefully, it's the last time we, the ARPA topic is in front of you. It's no major modifications, but it's really just sort of program cleanup. Ms. Walker has been the patron saint of ARPA, and she's done a fantastic job, probably deserves a whole 12 months of everyday excellence, to be honest with you. But we will be back in front of you in December. All those papers will be out with, you know, a few, just again, some cleanup items. But that hopefully puts the ARPA topic to rest, you know, moving forward. Everything will just be in motion, and all those projects will be completed.
Thanks, Dr. Miller.
I know you may have covered it this evening, but just since we're talking about it, when we're talking about net worth limit, are we taking into account the value of the home?
No.
Right. I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure we clarify that for our constituents. So what we're talking about specifically is what's in IRA, is that what we're talking about, correct?
Okay. It's the home and the surrounding 10 acres around the home, to the degree it's up to 10 acres. So it's even giving some compensation deduction for that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have one question, too, and of course, I'm sure our Commissioner of Revenue will be aware of this. I know there was amendment on the ballot for the state to amend for widows of those and killed in action, or so. Did that, I don't recall if that passed. Old news overshadowed it for me. I guess I was a little devastated my election day. But what happened was, could you speak to that amendment? Did it pass first? And then, are we able to quantify what that might mean here in Chesterfield County from a budgetary standpoint?
So the amendment passed overwhelmingly with over 90% of the vote. It's hard to quantify, but I am hopeful that we will have spouses come in so that we can provide, we can process, process them for a real estate exemption.
Okay, okay. We'll need good communications relative to that, so we can probably maybe even reserve additional funding, because I heard 19.1 and the 19.2 for the coming year as well. It's something we really have to look at, given the growth in those areas, as well as veterans and seniors, too. So thank you for that. So we appreciate your being attentive to that, to assist us in that regard.
Yes, and, you know, again, to clarify, your seniors and disabled citizens, real estate tax relief program, the costs have remained fairly stable, although of course, they increase as home values increase, at about $5 million. The growth is in the constitutional mandate, which you fund locally, because we now have about as many veterans, and I don't think anyone here believes that we shouldn't support veterans in this way. We have at least as many veterans are getting the real estate tax exemption as locally the real estate tax relief.
Thank you.
And it will continue to grow. I sign probably an average of six, six to 12 applications or confirmation letters a week.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Appreciate that input. Well, I would suggest, as we get to this point, we do a trend analysis. I like, well, from three to four years of this cost for supervisors. I've watched over the years, but I like, I tend to like trend analysis, so we can see where we are and what the potential might be. Thank you. Continue on, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Well, you like trends, you're in the right spot for the next little bit.
We're good, good.
So these slides are some work that Gerard and staff, myself, put together. You all have had a lot of interest in our, in our recent trends, so it's really just sort of trying to correct some information that's out there that's a, it's a little bit unfortunate. So we'll run through this quickly, but we will post it on the website. I think Mr. McConnell's working on a blog to this effect. There's a lot of good information in here. But like I said, we will try to move quickly through it. So I'm gonna jump around to a number of different topics, but this is looking at year-over-year nominal general fund budget goals. This is our main operating fund for the county. You all know what the general fund is. And just looking simply at the percent change year-over-year. You know, one thing that's been mentioned is that, you know, these numbers don't include school funding. It certainly does. All of our support for schools is captured in these percent changes up here. And just want to call your attention to a couple of things. We're looking at, you know, sort of the modern history as we consider it, going back to FY09, which is sort of the high watermark for the general fund budget. And you see, so over the 15 years, if you take out the two COVID years, when, you know, that's sort of a weird period in terms of, you know, budget behavior, at least from a percent change perspective, you've only got one year in that 15-year period of time that is in excess of 5% growth. This is just, again, there's no adjustments here, this is just nominal growth. And there's been a lot of focus on that year, fiscal year 2023. And so the inset box there really kind of describes what happens there. And we will walk you through in the subsequent slides, sort of some of the backstory there. But 92%, over 92% of that increase in fiscal 23 was dedicated to the installation, the implementation of... was dedicated to the installation, the implementation of the pay plans, the compression adjustments that were, you know, decades overdue on this county side and the school side. A large influx of one time money, quite honestly, all of that revenue that's reflected in 23 is not recurring tax dollars, but the employment of capital reserves for that year. Some tax relief enhancements, some of what you've just talked about. But that that is really what's going on there. After that's digested, even in high inflation environment, the last couple of years, you see the the budget growth has been sub 5% for the last two years. And you see the long run trend, when you take all the years into effect, is, you know, less than 2% year over year over this entire time. So I think one of the things that gets lost unfortunately in this conversation is, you know, cherry picking a year or two or three as opposed to looking at the entirety of our financial history. Mr. Durkin, I would very, very much love, you know, if every year was very simple and straightforward and there was no external forces that took any bearing on what we did and where our our financial ship sailed. But that's simply not the case. The pressures that you all face, you know, are different every single year and we have to respond accordingly. So you really have to take the long term view when you're looking at financial trends. Mr. Holland, you've always been a loud proponent of that and I think you see that here today.
So you're saying we've had over this period of time roughly approximate 5% growth in the GL, general fund?
No, no, no. So the long run trend is sub 2% year over year. Taking into fact, all of these, you see the, you know, you've got five years there. Five of the years actually a decline in the total general fund budget. 22 is is a large number simply because of the large reduction we took in COVID. We didn't start realizing all that. So it basically comes back the next year. It's just sort of an anomaly. It really is 23 is the only year in this entire series on your screen that is, you know, measurably above the trend.
Okay, very good.
A simple point, yes, sir. So, you know, going back to, you know, what happens in 23, this is the merit history. I think it's a good tandem slide to Ms. Selby and her conversation here in a few minutes. But you see merit history coming out of the recession 11, there's a zero merit, you know, average over that entire period leading up to 23, even through COVID, is just a hair over one and a half percent a year. I think all of you, Mr. Holland, Mr. Carroll, for different reason, Dr. Miller for a little bit. You know, you recognize you build up a liability in terms of the market and the distance that we found ourselves from the market. We were moving, starting salary adjustments, particularly for teachers and public safety. We had a large compression problem. You cannot sustain that on an ongoing basis. This board, a partnership with the school board, said enough's enough. And in 23, we went in and corrected that. And that's why you see that spike there in 23. And that's why you see that same pattern in each one of the charts that you'll see today. But this is the underlying reason for it. It is compensation based, particularly in our frontline positions in schools and in public safety for our first responders. So why does it have that much of an impact? Well, this is who we are. You know, we are a people business. As public safety folks say, you know, we still make house calls. 80% of our budget is personnel and capital. So when you have cost pressures in those areas, it affects us, you know, tremendously.
You can see that on there, you know, we don't like to just look at ourselves in a kind of bubble. We like to see what's going on regionally as well as nationally. And when you look at the national picture, you can also see that cost pressure being very persistent. This is wages and salaries, employment cost index for all industries. And you can see for private and government, government on the kind of green line there, there's a slight lag in that wage and salary growth adjustments. But it's not a unique phenomenon to Chesterfield. It has been happening nationwide. You can see that period of low growth after the last recession, that kind of paying back that liability that Matt said had been built up over the last few years. You can see that spike, private sector part has been coming down. But, you know, to retain talent, and you'll hear a lot more from HR on this, you know, you have to pay people appropriately. As Dr. Casey always likes to say, you know, don't endeavor to be the pay leader, but you certainly have to pay to attract talent to remain with the organization.
So if you stitch these slides together, you have a prolonged period of time, more than a decade of very low wage growth. We are two thirds personnel cost. And then the market moves on us even amongst that in COVID. We're starting salaries for our, you know, frontline, you know, most, you know, crucial positions moves. We did not have a choice in fiscal 23 but to respond. But we weren't just dealing with this particular trend. We had that decade of of falling behind that we had to address as well.
So you can also see that not just on the kind of operating day to day, but also on the capital side. You mentioned earlier, one of the topics being schools, but also schools capital in particular. You can see on the chart there, it's a 30% growth in the PPI or producer price index, basically the cost of building new schools just within a short time period from when COVID had started. We are now seeing that reflected in costs, cost estimates, sorry, for upcoming school projects. We are also seeing it on the county side and it's definitely going to be one of the larger topics as we move through fiscal year 2026.
Yeah, so there's a lot of conversation, inflation numbers are out today. People pick whatever inflation measure they want, that's fine, you know, for your own particular life. For us, we don't get a choice. This employment cost index and things like this PPI, you know, these are the things that we actually as an organization go out and buy and invest. And it doesn't matter what's happening for, you know, a broad range of goods. Our basket of goods as an organization are really reflected in these two particular indices. And, you know, that that's what drives the bottom line at the end of the day.
But I thought it would be really good to show some specific examples of those cost pressures that we have been facing over the last few years. You know, we're sitting here today showing you the longer term trends, but this is what's actually happening on a day to day basis. You can see to keep up with the market for public safety, the implementation of the public safety pay plans. These are the recruit salaries, starting when we incepted these plans in fiscal year 2022, right to what they are now. You can see that's an over 30% increase for each of those agencies. But if you also look at the kind of non-public safety part as well, you can see the cost of a new diesel school bus, fiscal year 2021, it was 114,000, now 145. A ladder truck for fire was one and a half million dollars, now 2.1. And the access mobility program, which we've talked to you about and will also be a topic of conversation over the next few months, fiscal year 2021, that cost was 800,000. Right now, it's sitting at about 3.1. That's a 291% adjustment over the last few fiscal years. Tax relief elderly program, Mr. Holland, you mentioned trends and we're happy to provide that data. The chart on that one, I can tell you speaks for itself. But the numbers there also tell the same story. Fiscal year 2021, cost of that program, 10.7 million dollars, now 19.1.
And and just to be clear, the the public safety starting pay numbers are up there. We are not, not the pay leaders in any three of those numbers. We're within, you know, what we think is striking distance of our closest competition. So it's a big move to get to there. But I think the other thing that you mentioned, we brought everyone along with them. We could not move those numbers, you know, what you see on the screen, $15,000, and then have them leapfrog folks that had been here, serving in those ranks all those years. So that is the nature of the the large increase in 23. That decompression is, you know, basically taking 1,500 people, you know, through that mathematical exercise. And to my earlier point, this this is just up here. I mean, CPI, you saw that, you see in the news today. These are the things that are in CPI, you know, we, I don't buy a lot of, I don't pay for a lot of funerals or airline fares or college tuition, toys and recreational goods. So that's why those measures really don't apply very well to our business. Because it's a very, again, a very wide and broad based basket of goods, most of which does not apply to what we do here at the county. Instead, what we, the fortunately, the Bureau of Economic Analysis has a cost index that is specific for the things that state and local governments buy. And we have been trending and tying ourselves to this to measure exactly, you know, how we're doing on the cost of local government services for as long as I've been here, for, you know, the better part of 20 years. What you see here is that's charted in the blue, the blue bar is year over year percent change and core CPI, which is a very popular measure of inflation in the green. But you can see in 22 and 23, the cost of local government services up seven and eight percent for that specific bundle of goods. And you have 10 out of the 17 years plotted here where the state and local index has been higher than core CPI. So core CPI is just not a relevant measure of what we do and how we, you know, track the the cost of local government services because it's just measuring two very, very different things at the end of the day. The other thing to consider, you know, when you look at these long run trends is, you know, we've got more customers than we used to have. That's just the nature of it. This is population growth, same exact period, year over year percent change. It's died down a little bit the last couple of years, but still five of our last seven years have been above that long run average. What does that mean for us? Well, every time we add a citizen, we don't add a payroll clerk necessarily. But there are certain aspects of our operation where we have to scale to keep up with population growth. Teachers, first responders, all those things, and eventually back office scales, you know, to some degree. But population growth has certainly driven, you know, a portion of what we've done the last five to seven years. So you've had higher than normal population growth. You've had inflation that's well, well above trend for us, you know, has made for some challenging, you know, backdrop from a financial perspective. So what happens when you take, if you go back, this chart, our, you know, specific index for local government inflation, all of our new friends from a customer perspective, and adjust those figures that you saw earlier, sort of our our general fund, our main operating fund, deflate it for, you know, controlling for inflation basically and for new customers. If you take those factors out, what is the true cost of government on a per capita basis done over that period of time? So we're controlling for, you know, no new customers and taking inflation out of it, it's flat. You come out of 08, 09, 10, you know, we made a lot of structural adjustments. We have held on to those changes. And for the last 13 years, bounce around a little bit here, there. You got a couple of COVID years, but it is, it's it's pretty much a tabletop in terms of that 13 year period. And this, again, we have monitored and reported on this every single year, every budget document, every budget presentation I could think of had some version of this in there. I think this is the truest measure of the real cost of local government services in Chesterfield County. It's been suggested that, you know, we should just follow a a simple pattern, you know, just grow the budget 3% a year and, you know, that is what it is. So we we say, well, we'll do some math on that. That would be interesting to look at. So we went back to 2008, we're going to grow it 3% a year. That's the green line. That would take our general fund budget in the, in this current year to 1.21 billion. Well, we're not even at a billion dollars with what the actual path that we took over that time period. So we are, you know, 213 million dollars below, you know, a policy that had been implemented in 2008, said grow the budget 3% a year. So those kind of simple, you know, sort of, it it sounds good. It's it's a useful soundbite, I guess, in some corners. But in reality, it it's not something that you can actually follow. And we would be in a much, much different position financially. So we have been able to take a chart, a very different course. We've had to deal with the issues that have, you know, come to us each and every year. But 3% growth over this entire period would would make the general fund budget much, much larger than it is today. Real estate revaluations, you certainly hear a lot about that. And it's true, the last couple of years have been above trend. But as we say throughout the course of this presentation, and we'll say it through the course of the budget season, you have to look at the longer trend. Over the same time period back to 08, the average increase, people are going to be on either side of that, is sub 3% growth. You had five years where the values went down consecutively. And then you had a, you know, seven, eight year period where it was right on trend essentially. The last couple of years have been higher. Again, that's that's market conditions. And this is not taking into account all of the things that you all have done from a tax relief perspective. This is simply the market value of real property in the county. But again, if you told someone that the long run average of their, for appreciation of their home is sub 3%, I think that that stands as a as a pretty reasonable mark. Like I said, that's the previous slide, just looking at it in a vacuum. This is looking at it from a rate perspective. You see going, this goes back to 04. You did have a similar run up in home values prior to the 08 recession. You see some pretty steep reductions there. But this has come down consistently. This is a 20 year period and it's been a 17 cent rate reduction over that 20 years. So not quite a penny a year, but it's been very consistent the last three years. You go back to this chart, higher than normal revaluation activity. And the rate has been reduced in each of those three years where it sits now at 90 cents. And this is not taking into account any of the one time things that you all have done. We'll look at that here in another slide. Tax relief, I think this board to your credit, you've not looked at and said, this is the only lever that we can pull. It's certainly been a consistent one. We've reduced the rate time and time again, but we have looked at tax relief as a broad topic. And this is a great summation. We couldn't even, we had to make some edits. We couldn't even fit everything that's been done on one single slide. But you see the rate coming from 95 to 90. We now have the lowest personal property rate of any of our peer group, anybody in the state that's that's in our, you know, same strata in terms of size and sophistication. We have the lowest rate there, 25 cent rate reduction last year, cut the vehicle registration fee in half. For small businesses, we, you know, in partnership with Ms. Hughes, we've raised that $200,000 to to 500K and we'll look for continued adjustments in that line. PPTRA, this is one that, there's nobody in the Commonwealth of Virginia that has utilized that to provide relief to citizens like Chesterfield County. You see the additions to the $41 million the state provides, 22 million, 15 million and another 3 million last year on top of cutting the rate 25 cents. And you recall back in 23, when we had a year end surplus that didn't go to some of the other topics we've discussed here today, a one time 5% credit on the June bill. And we have said consistently, that's something we will look to do when those opportunities present itself. So that was a, you know, if you go back to this chart, yep, you had a double digit increase in revow, but you also had a 5% credit on that next bill in addition to the rate coming down for ongoing relief. So it's been a broad based and persistent approach to dealing with some of these cost pressures that we have had facing us the last few years. Another topic sort of in this space as well, you know, there's been a lot of, you guys talk about economic development quite a bit and, you know, will continue to do so, but haven't seen that flow through into tax policy yet. And in in large measure, that's true. And the reason for that is the last five years, economic development department and partnership with the board has had incredible years, over $5 billion of of new investment. That said, it takes a, you all know the Lego site. That does not happen overnight. It takes time for these projects to be constructed and to show up on the tax roll. So moving forward, it's certainly, if that, imagine that rate chart in five, 10 years from now. You will see additional reductions as this $5 billion and all the other things that the department is currently working on begin to, you know, show up in terms of real brick and mortar on the ground. But we did a sort of a hypothetical scenario, excuse me. Mr. McConnell has a great blog out today on this topic. Just kind of takes a look at the 70 30 ratio that you all have, you know, heard about from time to time. So what would it take to move our 80 20, you know, rough terms to 70 30, which, you know, in some corners is a is a goal. And certainly, again, it sounds nice, but you would have to have no new houses added. So no new residential construction at all, that goes completely halted. Revail it 2% a year, which is a full percentage point under the long run average. Commercial growth of 5%, which is, you know, within reason. However, that basically, it sounds that way, but that's essentially a new Lego every single year on the tax rolls. Do all of those things every year from now until 2046 to get to 70 30. Does that mean that economic development activity hasn't been successful? No, no way. But this is just the, you know, the law of large numbers. You can't turn, you know, a suburban locality like Chesterfield County into 70 30 overnight. It's a very long proposition and it will, you know, has great promise for rate reductions as we move forward. But this is going to take, you know, several years and commitment over several boards to to get there. But I do encourage folks to go read the blog and and see some more details on that.
So really quickly, as I mentioned earlier, we don't just like to look at ourselves. We also like to look at our peers and see how we stack up there. And we went back and looked through fiscal year 29 through fiscal year 2025 and the growth in the general fund budgets for those of a population 100,000 or more. We also looked at the population increase as well. Intuitively, you know, as the population would increase, you would expect, as Matt said earlier, the cost of services to go up. Our population is the highest in terms of growth in that period on the chart. But you can see in terms of growth of the spending, we're actually really in the middle of the pack. I think we're just slightly I think we were just slightly behind Henrico, roughly we're about 6.4, 7% growth over that period. But what I will also say is, within that period, we have been one of the very, very few localities of that size that have actually went towards rate reductions on multiple fronts over that exact same period. Moving on really quickly, this is something that is produced every year by the Virginia Auditor of Public Accounts. They look at local government expenses, revenues, the whole gamut. But really quickly, we just wanted to see, you know, compared to our peers on a per capita basis, what is our revenue burden? And what you'll see in the next two charts is, even with all the growth of the last few years, we are still the lowest in terms of revenue generation per capita across the larger localities in the state, both on the revenue side as well as the expense side.
Yeah, so it's, it's factoring in that fiscal 23 number that, you know, like I said, that's, that's the one year of the 20 years that stands out. Even controlling for that, lowest local revenue burden amongst our peer group in the state. And, you know, we, we, there's 30 of these charts will spare you, but the operating cost per capita also lowest amongst our peer group.
And finally, one of the things, we talked about this in audit and finance, is we have created a financial transparency page on the county website. This actually collates all of the information that is published by all divisions within the finance and administration portfolio, and puts them in the kind of one easy key spot that residents can go and look. They can see all of the budgets, current year, prior years, the ACFers, that, you know, today's just been published for fiscal year 24 as well as prior years, reports from internal audit, real estate assessment data, procurement annual report, just one nice, easy spot that people can go and access all the information that we already publish.
So that's, again, that's a lot of topics. Again, I do, I do encourage folks to look at the website, it's, it's fantastic. It's the most comprehensive resource that, you know, is out there in terms of financial resources, but it's, it's excellent. Mr. Durkin had a, a whole lot to do with that. So with that, we're happy to take any questions so we can get on to HR.
Okay, any questions?
Why? Why?
Any questions or comments?
Who gave that one up?
Yeah. Can't do it. It's time for, it's time for Ms. Selby. She is, she's very patient, like she did a fantastic job.
Yeah. Yeah, well, thank you for the presentation. Next item.
D, Human Resources Annual Update, Ms. Martin Selby.
Welcome, Ms. Selby. It's good to see you here.
Good to see you too.
Thank you. Thank you.
As Mr. Harris leaves, just for disclosure sake, it was just a picture for his birthday.
Okay.
For transparency sake, it wasn't anything, any bad statistic. It was just, we were wishing him well.
Yeah, when is his birthday, Ben O? Today?
Tomorrow. But keep it a secret, everybody.
Okay, well, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Members of the board, Dr. Casey.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all for having us here today. We're here to present HR's FY24 Annual Report. I have with me today both Assistant Directors of HR, Kristy Brittle and Mandy Pilk, who will be co-presenting with me. Each year, we come before you to share with you trend data to show you how we are progressing as a workforce. And I'm so glad Dr. Casey put us right after Mr. Harrison and Mr. Durkin, because all the employee investments that he talked about, I think this report you'll be real pleased with, because it will show you how those investments have paid off. Real happy with today, all good news.
Right.
All right. So Chesterfield is a high performing organization with a solid reputation of being a great place to work. We have been recognized over the past five years at the national, state, and regional level with 20 best in class awards for our workplace. And over the years, HR has received 19 NACO awards for innovative programs and services that directly impact our employees. And we just received some good news yesterday that we will be sharing publicly about our workplace. So again, real good news on the employee front. So HR has 35 employees that work in our department, five core teams. We have employment, human resources, information systems, compensation and benefits, employee relations, and our administration team. Most of our HR professionals have HR certifications, professional designations, and advanced degrees. Another major division of our department is the Employee Medical Center. The staff there, we have 11, includes a physician, four nurse practitioners, three LPNs, and then medical support staff. So I believe the county is very fortunate to have such a dedicated team of HR and medical professionals that day in and day out, take care of our, our workforce. I'm also very pleased about our department, because I think behind every great workforce is a great HR department, and I, I think we have some of the best, and they're sitting over to my right, your left. So how do we attract and retain quality employees? We have four approaches that we've listed for you on this slide, and I believe they remain relevant in today's labor market. They include promoting a culture of work-life balance, which we know is important for longevity, offering competitive pay and benefits, which Mr. Harris talked a lot about, cultivating our own talent pool through succession planning, I'm a product of that. And today, we'd like to focus on the last bullet, which is to develop innovative recruitment strategies that appeal to high caliber applicants, because we know that there are fewer individuals entering the labor market, and more of our employees are becoming eligible for retirement. So we have to be very intentional about our approach to recruitment and recruiting good talent. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mandy, and she will talk about ways we recruit.
Thank you, Mary. I'll start off by discussing HR's enhanced recruitment plan. While we have a number of strategies for each of the three objectives that are listed here, in the interest of time, we're going to focus on one strategy for each objective. Our first objective is to increase the number of qualified applicants, and our strategy here is to partner with the Digital Media Coordinator to expand our social media outreach. Based on the data from January 1, 2024, we've posted a total of 133 posts across social media, totaling an average of three posts per week over the course of 43 weeks. For the time period of January 1st to October 25th of this year, we had 9,310,060 video views, which is an increase of 84,215% when compared to the same period last year. And yes, that's just for employment posts. Later, you'll hear more about our increase in applications and interest in Chesterfield County as an employer. So very quickly, we're going to flip through a few slides and show you some examples of our social media presence and the Digital Media Coordinator, Katie Kaminsky's fun and creative way of driving engagement in applicants to our job website. Here are some additional posts featuring our interns, our great staff over in General Services Fleet, and Girl Scouts delivering cookies to recognize our employees for Public Service Recognition Week.
But the tall person in the back is not a Girl Scout. I think that's our county administrator.
Right. These posts highlight some of the benefits that county employees enjoy, including our state of the art fitness center, onsite learning opportunities, and our full service Employee Medical Center. And then here are a few lighthearted posts that show how fun it is to work for Chesterfield County. The social media platforms that we utilize are Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn, and we look forward to our continued partnership with the Department of Constituent and Media Services. Our second objective is to develop and nurture a robust talent pipeline for future employment. And our strategy here is to outreach schools and organizations both inside and outside of the region. Our first strategy focuses on getting out there through social media, but it's also important that we're doing outreach in the community, and that includes not just the HR team, but other departments as well. This is a visual representation of the many partnerships and outreach efforts that the county has participated in to market Chesterfield as an employer of choice.
And if I could just mention, we're starting very early, because next week, one of our staff will be visiting a kindergarten class to talk about employment opportunities in local government, so. Yeah. Train them up.
On this slide, I'd just like to point out that the seals and logos around the pictures represent over 200 hiring events that the county, and that includes public safety, has participated in, or participated in FY24. Our third objective is to provide recruitment support to departments for critical and hard to fill positions, and our strategy here is to increase internal data collection and benchmark with other localities to set measurable recruiting metrics. Critical and hard to fill positions include positions that have multiple openings or multiple positions, such as family services workers, police officers, firefighters, STEM positions, and other technical positions like doctors and lawyers. Our outreach efforts and pipeline development help increase our number of applicants for these challenging to fill positions. And then by using the enhanced data collection that will be available with our new Workday system, we will be able to report data in real time to help with our forecasting needs and effective recruiting strategies. This is a snapshot of our recruitment, talent acquisition, and career progression numbers for FY24. These numbers show that we are potentially making some headway with our enhanced recruitment strategy, even though the strategy is relatively new. We're seeing an increase in promotions, which means our employees are highly competitive, and an increase in applications, which means our social media outreach efforts are working. The top three reasons individuals choose Chesterfield for employment include opportunities for advancement, salary, and work-life balance. After review, you'll notice that there was a decrease in job advertisements, but an increase in applications processed, which means we are seeing more employees stay. This slide summarizes the applicant clearance processes that the county requires to ensure our employees meet certain standards to be public servants, which includes drug testing, an FBI criminal background check, and an educational verification. And these numbers include pre-employment as well as promotions and transfers. With these applicant clearance processes, less than 3% resulted in disqualification from employment. I'm now going to turn it over to Kristy to highlight ways we reward.
Thank you, Mandy. Just like with recruitment, we have three objectives related to supporting the county's compensation philosophy. They're to conduct annual market surveys, keep our county and schools' pay plans and structures current, and then to maintain reserves for public safety in the general government pay plans. And we do continue to make progress in this area with the help of, support of this board and with county administration. Following the implementation of Workday in July of 2025, we'll begin the RFP process to retain an outside compensation consultant. And having access to, to that in addition to our current valuable benefits consultants will help us continue to meet these objectives. You can see that the number of department-specific career development plans grew by 12 in FY24, and more employees than ever before now have access to a CDP. There's only 13% of our employees who do not currently have access. So as you can tell from this slide, we are continuing to make great progress in employee compensation. The average employee annual full-time salary increased by nearly $6,000 over the last fiscal year, and the median salary increased by about the same amount. New positions in fire and lower turnover in other public safety departments has helped to decrease the overtime hours and expenses in public safety. Now, you do see that the number of employees below midpoint did go up slightly, but that's because the salary ranges moved so that we could continue to be competitive in the labor market. So what do average and median salaries increases look like for our employees? Well, in this slide, you'll see the average salary for some common job titles across the county, and you can see the column for the salaries before we started implementing the FACE study, and the anticipated average salaries after we do the January merit increase. So these salaries have increased anywhere from 20 to 59% in a three-year period for the titles you see here. And while these increases seem significant, and they really are, the current salaries are now more in line with salaries in the local government region. And this shows that we really did have some catching up to do with other salaries in the region, and it falls in line with what Mr. Harris was showing earlier with his presentation. And Mr. Durkin didn't tell me he was going to steal my slide, but this slide shows a similar comparison for public safety employees and does include emergency communication officers. We started including them in the public safety pay plan earlier this year, and their ranges, increases have ranged from 24 to 39%. So in line with the budget presentation from Mr. Harrison, Mr. Durkin, here you see a comparison of compensation investments this board has approved over the past five years to help bring sal, employee salaries in line with those in the region. So on behalf of Human Resources and our employees, we thank you for showing your commitment to the workforce, and it helps make our job much easier for retaining, recruiting and retaining employees. So while we do partner with Chesterfield Schools on our health and dental contracts, what you see here is shown, the information shown represents expenses just for county participants. The county spent over $44 million in FY24 on healthcare, and out of those expenses, the county paid about 71 and a half percent of that, while the employee's responsibility was a little over 28%. Projected healthcare expenses are estimated to be around $136 million for the rest of this calendar year for the schools and county combined. Healthcare premiums will increase by 5% next year to keep up with the rising cost of health insurance. But by maintaining a healthy healthcare fund, this does help the employees bottom line, whether it's buying down proposed rate increases or, when appropriate, giving premium holidays. And we shared with the board last year, we did contract with Mercer, who has performed a claims audit with, with Anthem to make sure that all of our claims are being processed correctly and according to contract. And while the results were good, meaning there were very few incorrect charges, there are some ways that we think we can maybe save expenses on future claims costs. So we will be working with Mercer and Anthem to see if there's any possibilities where we can look at those costs. With any good program, in order to keep it meaningful, you have to be, you have to reinvent. And that's kind of what we've been doing with our C-FIT program. A few of the big initiatives we've had over the last year, we do continue to encourage employees to build relationships with their primary care providers. We made changes to the 2024 Wellness Incentive that directly tie the incentive to the employee's annual wellness physical. We're also in the process of building a wellness steering committee with involvement across county departments to encourage more employee, employee involvement and driving the direction of our wellness initiatives. We'll also continue to partner with the Schools Wellness Coordinator as appropriate on any potential joint initiatives. The county's Wellness Coordinator has worked to create more opportunities for physical fitness both before and after work and during lunchtime, as you see in the pictures in front of you. The goal of the HIT Refresh classes is not only to promote physical exercise, but also to build camaraderie amongst the participants, and also encourage employees to get away from their, their desk at lunchtime to de-stress. And then during the last year, we invested about $25,000 into the employee fitness rooms and changing areas. The petition rate, participation rate has increased by 59% from about 143 visits in June of 2023 to 228 in July of 2024. The Employee Medical Center continues to be a great benefit for county and schools' employees, allowing them to see board-certified medical providers onsite relatively quickly. The number of visits have remained consistent. However, we did notice a decrease in wellness visits as compared to prior years while we were in the pandemic. However, the number of physicals conducted for public safety positions have increased in recent years, and we do expect that trend to continue. And also with the board's support, we are expanding our services to employees with the startup of a behavioral health program, and that will employ a psychologist and clinicians to serve county employees. And it just so happens, our program coordinator and clinician, Paul Brazler, just started with the county yesterday, and he is here with us today. So Paul, if you would stand up, please. He had no idea when he came in yesterday that he was going to have to stand up at the board meeting today. Surprise. We did see an increase in retirements this year, and we, we knew this was coming. We, we knew that employees would delay their retirement, because we started making those pay adjustments back in 2021, so they were way pay adjustments back in 2021, so they were waiting until those pay adjustments had a bigger impact on their retirement benefits. And out of our 101 retirements, 42 were from public safety. In addition to retiring through Virginia Retirement Services, our employees do continue to contribute to their own retirement savings accounts through our county's deferred compensation plans. Our employees deferred $11.6 million in FY '24 to their own retirement plans. That's a 14% increase over deferrals from the prior year. 64% of our employees are enrolled in deferred compensation compared to the national participation rate of 59% for similar plans. As a family-friendly employer, paid parental leave continues to be another well-used benefit for county employees. In FY '24, we processed 248 paid parental leave requests, up from 220 in FY '23. And the chart on the right shows you the breakdown of the different reasons for the paid parental leave. Our volunteer benefits are a new benefit program we just began offering at the beginning of this year. The chart you see displays the various types of additional coverages employees have elected through Pierce Insurance, and the numbers you see in parentheses are the numbers of contracts for each of those types of insurance. Pierce representatives indicate that for an organization our size, they would expect around 2,000 contracts, and with over 2,600 contracts at the end of this fiscal year, you can see we're on the higher end of employee participation. So now I'll turn it back over to Mandy to talk about the ways we retain.
Thanks, Kristi. In a previous slide, we talked about the three main reasons employees chose Chesterfield. One was opportunity for advancement, one was salary, and one was work-life balance. This slide shows you some of the other incentives we use to recruit and retain employees, and these are common amongst high-performing organizations. In addition to these programs that are managed by county HR, there are a number of other programs that support and recognize our workforce and help with our recruitment initiatives. Everyday Excellence is a way of recognizing employees through awards presented during Board of Supervisors meetings that commend employees who are pursuing excellence every day through their work. Employees who retire with 25 years or more full-time service are recognized with a retirement commemorative brick, which is an engraved brick placed in the courtyard in front of the historic courthouse, and employees also receive a replica brick as a keepsake. Model County Government Day, which happened today, gives county high school students an opportunity to learn more about local government and the great careers that are available with the county, and I think we have some students here today.
No kindergarteners, though.
No, not yet. Maybe soon.
They're coming.
Each year, employees are given 24 hours of paid community service leave that allows them the opportunity to volunteer in the community. Employees who retire with 15 years or more full-time service received a framed retirement resolution from the Board of Supervisors, which recognizes their achievements during their time with the county. And then finally, coworker kudos are a way for employees to recognize and show appreciation for their coworkers, and that is sent out on a monthly basis to all county staff. Although county and schools have separate HR departments, in many ways, we are one employer, and so having consistency in personnel practices where possible is good. This chart shows our joint efforts with the schools and some future opportunities to seek alignment across both entities, and we look forward to the continued partnership and collaboration with schools. Turnover is always a complex topic because some turnover is good, like when a probationary employee is not working out and you have to do a probationary release, and some turnover is expected, like retirements following decades of service to the county. So what we try to focus on is actual turnover, which excludes probationary releases and retirements, and based on that definition, the county's actual turnover rate has consistently decreased over the past three years, as you will see displayed in the red highlighted bars. Again, we attribute the decrease in turnover rates in part to the county's focus on employee compensation, enhanced benefits, and work-life balance. For public safety, turnover dropped from 8.1% to 7.96% in FY '24, and as you can see from the chart, actual turnover dropped significantly from 4.35% to 2.67% in FY '24. There's a lot of work that happens in the employee relations space, but thankfully in FY '24, most of the work involved accommodating employees in the workplace and not complaints of discrimination or harassment. We view the accommodations as a positive because that demonstrates that employees feel like they can come to us if they have a special need. HR is thankful for the partnership with the county attorney's office, department leaders and managers, who offer support in implementing proactive measures to maintain work environments that are free of discrimination and harassment. I will now turn it back over to Mary to conclude today's presentation.
Thanks, Mandy. So we will look at a few workforce demographics and then wrap up with some final comments. So our workforce demographics have remained pretty consistent for the most part. A couple points to mention here: the boxes you see bounded in green, they represent full-time and part-time numbers, and then the rest of the boxes are full-time only. So the total number of full-time employees increased by 106 over FY '23. Minority employees in the workforce increased from 29% to 30%, which is significant because this is the first time we've crossed the 30% mark. Also, 24% of our department heads are minorities, so that equates to 10 of our 42 leaders, and that's up from four minority leaders in 2014. For FY '24, there were approximately 2,900 employees living in the county, an increase of about 40 employees over FY '23. But we think it's important to note that not all county employees want to live in the county because they may have family connections or they could have inherited property from family members outside of our locality. So we don't think that there will ever be 100% of county employees that both live and work in the county, and that's okay as long as they choose Chesterfield to work. So this slide next shows you the number of county employees by generation. Also, over on the far right, we list for you the number of separations by generation in the blue column. So we saw that the highest increase in employees joining the county were Generation Z, who are ages 26 and younger, and followed closely by Millennials, who are aged 27 to 47. And those leaving the county, as you would expect, at higher rates are the Baby Boomers and the Gen Xers, as they are retirement-eligible or approaching retirement-eligibility. Next slide shows you a few of the county administrators' updated FY '24 and FY '25 workforce priorities. HR continues to align our programs and services to Dr. Casey's priorities, and this slide shows you just a few of his priorities for employees, and I'll touch on them briefly. Expansion of the Employee Medical Center is the first one. We're currently working with architects to design our new space, which we are scheduled to co-locate with the IST staff over at their building, and construction is expected to be complete in December of 2026. And that location will help us house not only our Employee Medical Center staff but also the Behavioral Health staff. And as we shared, Paul's here now, our program manager for the Behavioral Health program. We plan to pilot that service first to public safety and human services, as they are the frontline contacts for our citizens, and then we hope to grow the program so that we can add the rest of the workforce as well as schools' employees. And related to the last bullet on the chart in front of you, I call that Dr. Casey's catch-all. We've listed for you in a handout that's in your packet a number of initiatives that we have created along with the help of our county leadership and schools' leadership that will help us grow our workforce in terms of recruitment and retention efforts. So this concludes our FY '24 Annual Report presentation. Before we take questions, I would like to ask our managers from HR and EMC to stand to be recognized.
Thank you.
So we have Liz Marker, Chief of Administrative Services, Sarah Hackley, she's our Employee Relations Manager, Renee Chalmers, our Employment and HRAS Manager. This is like a test. That's right. So excited. Courtney Heilman, Compensation and Benefits Manager. Dr. Tim Silver, he's our physician over at the EMC, and standing behind him is Laura Jensen, our nurse practitioner and practice manager. And of course, you guys met Paul again, Behavioral Health, Behavioral Coordinator. So I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say thanks to this board because you all have really made our job much easier. We get to tout a lot of great facts and figures, but behind this is a lot of work that this board directed, from competitive compensation and benefits to a very supportive work environment where folks know that they're valued and that we value their family and give them that balance. We talked about the paid parental leave and how that's really paid off, not only for families that are having children but also for families who are dealing with taking care of parents themselves. So thank you to the board for your support throughout the years, and again, we really appreciate you having our backs throughout this journey, so thank you.
Thank you so very much, Mary and team. You all have done a tremendous job, and you did great with your time, too, better than any other group, I must say. You did better. I'm looking at everything. By the way, thank you so much. Any comments or questions from the supervisors? Right here. I think I have. Yeah, please.
Paul, man, you did a good job hiding back there. Paul and I go way back. Very good choice. We worked here at Chesterfield for 13 years together, I guess, right? Or it was seven of those 13, and we've stayed in touch throughout a lifetime, and so it is nice to have you back. It proves that Chesterfield is a lot like Hotel California. You really don't ever leave. It's great to be working again together at Chesterfield.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Supervisor, next. Who's next?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I say thank you for all your hard work. I do realize, you know, if you look at the collection of the presentations today, that both what Matt's team did and what your team did, it's, I think, the takeaway for the community is to understand that we have had to make some tough choices, quite frankly, to make sure that we remain competitive in Chesterfield County for our employees, and something, if you looked at totality of those slides, is something we didn't do for a long time. And I remember when our turnover rate for public safety was 10-plus. I remember when we hired over 600 people in a 10-year period for a 500-man department or person department, as you could say, tremendous men and women in the organization. So it's good to see the turnover rates down because as we retain the intellectual property, it's how we can provide a much better service to the community and not have to spend as much money to constantly recruit and retrain new employees, and it's not just on the public safety side, it's for the entire county. And so thank you for your hard work and your continuation to, you know, if you look at those numbers, we had a lot of people eligible to retire, and there's a challenge coming up because we're not just competing in the rich market anymore, we're competing globally in the United States because every other jurisdiction around the country is having the same problem in retaining and hiring talent. And so we have to make sure that we are providing our best opportunity for people to realize that Chesterfield County is, as we like to say, a great place to live, work, and play and raise a family. So thank you.
Yeah, outstanding. Any other speaker?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Engel.
I think the retention rate is huge, but I think part of that goes to culture. We've focused more on the balance of life and work in the county as well as making sure. We don't have the highest compensation. I think that's important. I don't think, there may be a particular position that we're higher than our regional peer that we measure against, but in general, we're not. What we are is we have a better perception of a work-life balance in the employer of choice, and we're seeing that in public safety especially but in all areas. And I know on the Social Services Board, we've seen a tremendous decrease. When I first joined the Social Services Board, we were seeing a huge turnover at year five, and now we're seeing mostly turnover in that probationary period, not in years five-plus, which is huge because, to Mr. Carroll's point, trying to retrain and bring people up into a position of leadership, although we want our people to advance, we want them to have those opportunities, we can't have that turnover so fast that there's no consistency, and we're seeing a change in that with a all-of-the-above strategy, not, and again, not with the highest compensation but with a total package. So thank you for all the work you're doing.
Excellent. Excellent. Any other comments?
Can I have one more comment?
Yeah, one more.
I also want to bring up with the Model County Government today. One of the things that a lot of folks said, a lot of the students said is, how nice I was, how nice the people are, how much they got along, how much they laughed together. It comes down to the intangibles, and I do say into both Mr. Engel and Mr. Carroll's part, point in that, you know, we not, won't necessarily, may not be able to match regional partners or regional folks that are competition, but it's the intangibles when it comes right down to it, and it's the friendships, those kind of things, it's the community, it's the family feel that is Chesterfield County, and it starts from the top and it just goes and funnels right through Human Resources. So thank you all for the hard work that you all do. It shows every day, and that's why folks, when they stick around for five years, they're here for a long time.
Thank you. Next supervisor. Oh, you okay? All right. Well, let me just conclude with the fact that I thank you for your excellence. What you do is outstanding. Continue to innovate, and what impresses me greatly is that we're able to grow the people to leadership positions, as you've indicated. That's the mark of an excellent organization, and I've seen many. Your doing that has made a tremendous difference, and I applaud you and thank you for your continued hard work, excellence, and dedication to Chesterfield County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engel.
Now you... I'm gonna let you add. I'm gonna let her add because I think it's gonna be good.
I think that was very, very clear in the search for the police chief and how deep our bench is here and how our leadership team is very, very supportive of each other. There's a great family feel there, so they're definitely supportive of everybody, so thanks.
Thank you. All right, we applaud you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
E Consent Agenda Highlights, Mr. Smith.
We'll wait for the hugs.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and cover, there's just a few items on your evening agenda, wanted to point out. Three contracts are awarded, and these are all in the transportation space, so kudos again to Ms. Walker and her team for just doing a bang-up job there. So first is actually your district, Mr. Holland. We have the Fordham Road sidewalk project from Jacobs Road Elementary to Chatham Grove Lane, so that's the first phase of that, and it's, we're awarding that to Dickerson Construction, just under $900,000. The next contract, the Rascud Award, is actually in your district, Mr. Carroll. It's the largest of the three on your evening agenda. This is the Western Area Infrastructure Improvements. It's a design-build contract, just under $43 million, covers a gamut of different improvements: the North-South Road, improvements to Duval Road, 16-inch waterline, so really happy to get that one going. As you know, we're really gonna get up and run on that one and complete it very, very quickly, so appreciate y'all's support in that, as well as support of the Procurement Department. Design-build is an innovative way to procure that, so appreciate their support. And then finally, another one out there in Watoa, a high-crash intersection, the Lakeview Road and Brainerd Bridge Road. A roundabout will be constructed there, just under $4 million, single-lainer, so very, very simple to navigate but should provide significant safety. Single-lainer, so very, very simple to navigate, but should provide significant safety improvements. So again, thanks for your support in those and kudos to Ms. Walker and her team.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any comments, questions? Here are none. Madam Clerk.
Item five, Reports.
Has, are there any questions regarding our reports? There are two, report A and B on our agenda. Any comments or questions, Supervisors? Those reports are approved.
Item six, 15-minute Citizen Comment Period on Unscheduled Matters. This time is designated for citizens to talk to the Board of Supervisors. It is not a time for dialogue with Board members, and it is not a question-answer period. Those conversations can easily occur with individual Board members outside of the Board meeting. As a reminder, the Board's procedures state, "No citizen shall speak on any matter of business that is a subject on the Board's agenda for that day, and each speaker shall have three minutes to address the Board." We have one Speaker, David Stritzenjer.
Basically, my time here today is gonna be a level set with you Supervisors and Mr. K, Dr. Casey and Mr. Mings. Mr. Mings, thank you for talking to me before the meeting started today. I have your basically email threads that I pad with all five Supervisors. If you might remember, I spoke here on August 28th. Then after September 25th, on September 25th, I said two people spoke to me about comments I made on August 28th. Well, the level set with everybody here, the two people that spoke to me were Mr. Gillies from Planning, he spoke to me in the parking lot, and the other person was Mr. Engels. I tried to get some responses from Mr. Gillis. Nothing. He did not respond to my email, which surprises me because on June 12th, I sent him an email congratulating him on Christine Bowling speaking to me on the phone and doing excellent work. He responded the very next day saying, "Thank you for the kind words." On the 13th, I also got another reply from, I think it was Norman Campbell, again thanking me for telling me what kind of great work his people does. But I guess, when you ask questions, you get no answers. I'm gonna, I asked Mr. Mings if I could read these emails. He said, "It's my time," so I'm gonna go for it. I sent the emails out on September 26th, which was the day after the September 25th Board meeting, when I mentioned about two people talking to me. See, Mr. Engels says, "Sorry, I have answered, he came back on the 20th." I'm sorry, this is from Mr., I'm sorry, I got these a little out of order, Mr. Engels. He claims, "I will go back to, I did tell the whole Board that I spoke to you right after I spoke to you at the Board meeting, just before the meeting started, and then again after you spoke at the following Board meeting, and you said two people talked to you. I did not know Andy had talked to you at first, but I spoke to him, I found out Andy talked to you." So, that was dated October 30th. October 25th, I got an email response from Mr. Carroll saying, "Yes, Jim Engel told me that he spoke to you at the work session." I don't remember the exact words. "He mentioned at the evening session that night when you came and spoke." I asked Jim if he, then when I came back the second time, I asked Jim if he was referring to the conversation that you had with him. He indicated that it believed you were talking about him and Andy. I'm out of time already? But basically... Thank you. So, Mr. Carroll knows the very first night that Mr. Engels spoke to me. So, I gotta believe Mr. Engels when he said that he spoke to all five of you, or four of you, I'm sorry. And then later on, I get more emails from this. I keep going back because I'm trying to find details, pulling, getting detail from you folks, like pulling teeth. Again, from Mr. Engel. "When I originally told the Board, right after it happened, just before the meeting started, I just said I had spoke to you. It was a 10-second conversation. After the meeting, I believe I mentioned that again to Jim Holland. The second time I told them was when we were eating dinner after you spoke at the afternoon session stating that two county officials spoke to you. During that conversation, Mr. Holland did not recall making a statement that started the whole conversation, but I assured him he did. I mentioned again I had spoken to you and that I had found out that Andy had as well. I know Mark was sitting between Jim Holland and me. Not 100% sure Jessica was paying attention, but I thought she was. Obviously, Kevin heard me say it. I never sent anything in writing. I'm only mentioning the things that I have in writing. I'm not mentioning any conversation I have with any of these people that I do not have in writing." Now, here's the very interesting part.
Okay.
On the same time, again, I sent all five of you people emails on September 26th. The same day, this is from Ms. Schneider. And this is the day after the second time I spoke, when Mr. Engels said he talked to you folks during dinner. Just by coincidence, it happened the next day because I didn't know Mr. Engels spoke to you all. Get my, my southern there. Ms. Schneider, "I believe one of the people, Mr. Engels, but no one told me. I saw him approach you before the evening session in the aisle before the meeting started last month because I could see from the dais and could see it happening. Heard nothing, saw something." From Mr. Miller, he didn't reply to my email until after I followed up. On October 25th, email from Mr. Miller. "Good afternoon, David. Thank you for following up on me. I apologize for not following up with you immediately with you. Unfortunately, I do not know the answer to any of your questions because the questions were, does any of you people know who the hell talked, who the heck talked to me? Since I am unfamiliar with the situation which you are referring to, the day after Engels spoke, right past him." And from the Chairman of the Board, from September 26th. "Sorry, I have no knowledge of whom you're referring to. I always leave quickly after meetings." You know how many times I read that second line? "I always leave quickly after meetings?"
Yes.
None of these conversations happen after the end of the meeting. They all happen during your lunches or during the meetings.
Thank you.
So, on that...
Your time has expired.
Well, you'll never see me here again. I will not be at any other Board meetings.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Madam Clerk.
Item seven, Closed Session. One, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A5, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, to discuss or consider prospective businesses or industries, or the expansion of existing businesses or industries where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating or expanding their facilities in the community. Two, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, to discuss the acquisition by the county of real estate for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the body. Three, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, to discuss the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And four, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, relating to the performance of the county attorney. Mr. Chair, we need a motion to go into closed session.
May we have a motion? Moved and properly...
Second.
Second, all those in favor, sign via. I have it in closed sessions. Good evening and welcome to the evening session of the November 13th Board of Supervisors Meeting. I have verified that all Board members have received copies of the comments posted to the online portal for consideration on the matters before us tonight. These comments are part of the public record and will be attached to the meeting minutes. In addition, for those citizens who are here for zoning portion of our meeting, the District Supervisor for Case 24 SN 1209, Magnolia Green Track CC Amendment, has requested a deferral to the Board's first regularly scheduled meeting in January. At this time, I will ask Mr. Carroll to give the invocation. Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, on behalf of my colleagues on this Board and the people of our community, I ask you to guide us in our deliberations this evening. I want to ask that you would grant peace in our world. I know that's a bit of an ask, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. I want to ask that you help guide the minds and hearts of our leaders in our country as they work towards that peace. We ask this in your name. Amen.
We would like to call for Deputy County Administrator Matt Harris to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Item 11, County Administration Update, Dr. Casey.
Good evening, Members of the Board and the public that is here and the public that is watching. I just have a few items tonight. And for the first item, it's dealing with CHASM. So, if I could have the Interim Director, Shelley Martin, come up to the podium. CHASM is our annual, many things they do all year long, but this is the time of year especially for those in need during Thanksgiving, that we turn our Fairgrounds Warehouse Facilities over to this nonprofit and help recruit as many volunteers and providers for those that can have a true Thanksgiving. And so, Ms. Martin and the county, I'll speak personally that, you know, that we get many volunteers of our workforce who come on out there, part of team building, but part of also realizing for those that are in the community that are in need.
I appreciate it.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you so much.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to talk a little bit tonight about CHASM. A lot of times, people hear the name but have sometimes some questions about what we actually do and what we, what our mission is. And I appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to speak. So, my name is Shelley Marin. I am the Interim CEO at CHASM, and I've been interim CEO probably about six or seven months now. So, just a little bit of background, CHASM was founded in 1988, and it was an alliance that came about from many congregations that worked with social services through Chesterfield and Colonial Heights. We expanded, if you notice on the map, we've expanded to Petersburg, Dinwiddie, Hopewell, and Prince George. Our main mission is to provide food, utility assistance through financial assistance, rewards, educational resources, and our Thanksgiving event to people who are experiencing financial emergencies. So, our group is very, what I consider, small but mighty. We have one CEO. We have two part-time associates. We have our signature Marianne Weeks Thanksgiving Program, which is to honor Marianne Weeks, the founder. She actually passed away this past fall, so this is especially poignant this year to honor her. We also work with 16 different food pantries in the area. We provide scheduling appointments, monthly basis for people in person to go to the food pantries throughout our six locations. Also, we do have a contract with DoorDash to help people who are disabled over 65 or they don't have any transportation to get groceries. So, we started that partnership, which has exploded. We have more, we have a lot of more need than we can fill. Our annual Thanksgiving event is next Saturday, the 23rd of November. We serve, try to get a non-perishable meal bag for at least three, try to, around 3,000 families and with a $20 grocery gift card. We do rely on donations for that, and we are extremely grateful for donations towards that mission. Just last year, we served 28, 2,826 meal bags with $20 gift cards. We had 35 social service, communities and schools partnerships, especially Chesterfield County, who came Friday, the day before, and picked up, that's us there with all of our bags. This year, we anticipate, just FYI, we're looking at about 2,500 families this year throughout our locations. We also, this year, have stepped up and done 51 pre-service pickup, which would be social services, communities, and schools. We also decided, since we heavily work with DoorDash, we wanted to give Ford Delivery Hubs, we're working with Bright Point Community College, to reach people within a 10-mile area of that area, like Matoka, it's kind of like South Chesterfield, Ettrick. Also, we are doing a delivery from the Fairgrounds and City Point Restoration Church in Hopewell and Molina Healthcare. They're located in Petersburg. And so, through those partnerships, we're gonna reach 200 people who otherwise... And so through those partnerships, we're going to reach 200 people who otherwise wouldn't be able to get to the Fairgrounds to get meal bags. So we're especially proud of that. A lot of people have a lot of need. Just one more little thing to note. Last year, our fiscal year, we ended up helping 24,000 individuals. We constantly take online food requests to go to food pantries, basically, you know, help a lot of people got them where they need to go for different services. This is, y'all can look at if you want to later. It's just broken down by Magisterial District to see, you know, what, how we help and what areas. And finally, I just want to say thank you. We're very humbled. It wouldn't be possible to have Chasm without the grants, especially from Chesterfield County, the community grant, and also the CDBG grant, which has been a God-sent for emergency utility assistance, and especially during this time when there are so many people that need help. And I just humbly want to thank you. And it's next week, if anybody wants to volunteer, at the Fairgrounds all week. Thank you very much.
Thanks for sharing. Any comments or questions?
What about the dates and times for volunteering?
He has a question.
Dates and times for volunteering?
The volunteering, you can, you don't have to sign up necessarily beforehand. You can come in person. It's going to be from 10 until 4, Monday through Friday, at the Chesterfield County Fairgrounds. If you look on our website at chasm.org, all the information is there. So if you want to come, help pack some bags, that would be fantastic.
I missed out last year. I'm going to try and make it this year, but I wanted to make sure everybody else in the community knows when they can come volunteer.
Definitely. Yeah, because it's hard to anticipate like how the needs, since we have to unpack everything, check expiration labels, it's a whole process.
Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you very much. Any other questions? I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for what you do for so many families here in Chesterfield County. On behalf of the board, thank you for your hard work.
Well, I appreciate it. And being a bilingual speaker, this is my, just FYI, my retirement job that has turned into a full-time job. But as a retired teacher, you're never going to retire. I don't know if anyone out there is a teacher, but I just want to note that I also deal with all the Hispanic bilingual speakers, and that is a growing need in our county, especially here. And it's one that's near and dear to my heart, so I'm glad that we're able to provide services for them also.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Just two or three other things real quickly. One is, I received word from our treasurer, Rebecca Longacre, that their office has been reaccredited. It's a stringent accreditation process that meets the statewide's best practices for treasury management. And again, they also have to pass an outside audit test to receive that accreditation. And while I'm talking about the treasurer's office, as a reminder, you know, there's going to be tax bills that should be out in the mail and due December 5th. You know, sometimes when people talk about the post office, whether they've gotten mail or we've received their mail, you know, we have to just always ensure that our processes are always putting it through the United States Post Office. If you're not sure or have not gotten a bill for December 5th for real property taxes that would come to you, maybe not your, maybe for those that have mortgages, a lot of them are covered by the mortgage company. There's many ways in which people can pay their taxes in Chesterfield County, and I want to pass along too, we have added our sixth kiosk where residents can pay their taxes at the Ettrick-Matoaka Library, and all the kiosk locations are noted on the website of the treasurer's office. In continuing the theme of good financial recognition, our Public Utilities Department had their AAA bond rating reaffirmed by Fitch Ratings. As far as I know, outside of Water and Sewer Authorities, which are multiple localities that join for that, we are the only singular triple-triple-A bond-rated utility system in the state of Virginia. It's the highest recognition, which again correlates to the lowest interest rate, you know, when and if they do issue debt. And speaking about public utilities, they are the winner of the 2024 Metropolitan Water Agency Sustainable Water Utility Management Award. And again, it's just, it's a recognition of their commitment to sustainable management and their dedication to achieving a balance of innovative and successful efforts in economic, social, and environmental areas. So it's a pure recognition statewide that they have received. Last but not least, and this is fresh off the press, you know, with Veterans Day being on Monday, and I think one of the board member reports will speak about Veterans Day, but if you, the board recalls, we had a presentation about our treatment courts that we have in the court system, and our newest one that we created was the Veterans Treatment Court. And there was a reference to this one individual, Lieutenant Colonel Kurt Powell, a 23-year Marine veteran, who's now to dedicate his retirement life to doing nothing but mentoring our Veteran Treatment Court participants for mental health or other substance abuse disorders. And the amount of hours and the difference he's making in the lives of so many veterans who are going through the treatment court process. When Congresswoman Jennifer McClellan announced that she was looking for nominees for the Veteran of the Year Award, we submitted his name and all the accolades that I just said and more, and we just found out today that it is announced that he is the winner of the Veteran of the Year Award. So I liked some point in time to actually, you know, bring that kind of person before you, so I would have, but I didn't want to hold back because you're probably going to be reading about this in the news tonight or tomorrow. And just to highlight for those in the public, you know, we have 26,000 citizens who are veterans. We have 570 employees, current employees of counties and schools that are veterans. We have three high schools that have junior RTC with over 300 students participate in the program. So again, this county is committed to the veteran recognition. And later in your agenda, of course, we're going to be recognizing two employees who are retiring after long careers in the military, but hopefully continuing their careers with Chesterfield for a long time. That is the end of my board report, sir.
Outstanding. Madam Clerk.
Item 12, Board Member Reports.
All right. Mr. Engel, I understand you there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And being that we only met two weeks ago, I'm going to keep mine really brief.
Yes, sir.
I want to invite everybody in the community, especially in the Chester area, to the Chester Community Tree Lighting. It'll be hosted at the Odd Fellows Lodge, number 281. The illumination is scheduled for December 6th at 6:00 PM at 12140 Harrigate Road. It's the tall tree that we've been lighting for the last several years. We do not, the county does not own the property any longer, but we have made an agreement to continue to light the tree in conjunction with the new owner. That is a change in date. It was originally scheduled for the 7th, but we needed to move it to the 6th, which also coincides with yours, so I won't be there, Mr. Holland. But also, just so you know, if you want to attend, you can park at the Chester Baptist Church across the street. There'll be help with PSAs and police officers to get people across the street, and refreshments will be provided as well from the Odd Fellow Lodge. So I'm sure it'll be a festive time. It's been a great celebration in Chester for the last few years. Glad we could bring that tradition back and look forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Engel. Ms. Snyder?
Good evening. So I had a wonderful time at Noche de Fiesta in the Garden, held at Louis Ginter Botanical Gardens. This event was hosted by the Virginia Hispanic Chamber and the Virginia Hispanic Foundation. It was a great way to recognize the Dia de los Muertos holiday, which also is known as the Day of Dead. They did have a, an altar there for, an alfrenda altar for all of the people that had passed, so it was really nice you could put a candle on it for them and honor them. So that was a nice touch that they added. Delicious food, vibrant crafts. They had a community altar, as I was just saying, so in a vending area also, so it was a lovely night in the garden. I attended the 62nd Richmond Humanitarian Awards Dinner hosted by the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities. This award honors individuals who promote understanding and respect among people of diverse backgrounds, and congratulations to the five winners this year. It was, one of them, actually, we actually serve on the airport commission with him. BK Fulton was one of the recipients. So we celebrated Virginia agricultural and our long and rich history brewing at Hops in the Park at Henricus Historical Park. My husband and I have been volunteering at this event for every year except for COVID, I think. It's a great day in the park. The weather can, was perfect this year. The event featured over 40 Virginia craft beers, brewing demos, marketplace, food, and of course, Virginia history. It's a, and it's a pleasure now that I'm on the Henricus Board of Trustees. Proceeds from the money raised during Hops in the Park event directly benefit Henricus Foundation Children's Education Fund, which funds programs and field trips for other area children. And this is all I have today.
Thank you. Ms. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to invite the community to join us next Monday at 10:00 AM as we break ground on the new Western Area Elementary School. And later on in our agenda this evening, I think it's under consent, we will be approving funds to actually create the roads necessary to serve the community in North-South Connector Road. I'll thank this board for your support in helping us to get all of this infrastructure in place to help the people in western part of Matoka. The facility is set to open its doors on August of 2026, and it will provide a state-of-the-art learning environment for our students, accommodating up to 1,000 students in kindergarten through fifth grade. And again, this is a project, thank you to the community, that was included in the 2022 Community Facilities Bond that was approved by the citizens. That's overwhelmingly by 75% of the voting group that day. Community members selected, people from the community selected the interior colors of the new two-story building, which was designed using the elementary school's prototype that we have in place for Chesterfield County Public Schools. And I have to say, Mr. Chair, that I have been a little envious of both the Bermuda District and the Dale District in the last couple of years, having the opportunity to have a Christmas tree lighting for your community. And so I was able to have Parks and Rec secure a Christmas tree for Ettrick. It's at the Ettrick Park. And so, we will be hosting the community to celebrate a holiday season at this year's tree lighting at Ettrick Park on December the 4th from 5:45 to 7:00 PM. And I would encourage, if, you know, I'm going to try and come to y'alls, and then, you know, if you're, if you're free that night, come to this one. It should be a great event for the community. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Dr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we're talking about Christmas lighting, I'll have to track down, Westchester Commons is going to have terrific, Christmas lighting also, so put that on your agenda once we have the dates for that.
You know she wants a Christmas tree now.
I'm feeling very left out here. I don't have a Christmas tree.
We'll figure it out for sure.
Find a spot and we'll get you a tree.
Yeah, we'll get you, no question about it. Supervisor Snyder and I just returned yesterday from the Virginia Association of Counties Conference. We attended, it was the 90th actually, and we had the opportunity to collaborate with fellow members of, to identify shared challenges, brainstorm solutions, and prioritize local government legislative needs. So just to kind of give you a feel, the VACO conference is really all, many of the electeds and also the county administrators coming together and sharing. I mean, we don't realize how diverse this state is. No kidding, this is a true story, that someone actually asked the question, I've been hearing all this information about this, but I've never heard of it. What's a data center? And that just shocked me. But it just shows you that it wasn't one of the issues that was on their agenda, but how it is so real for so many other counties. But it does provide an opportunity for us to recognize that when we all get together, we have an opportunity to really cross-pollinate. What you're looking at there is a picture of a beautiful wood carving from an individual in Minnesota. We attended a NACO conference, a National Association of Counties Conference in Tampa, and while we were there, you know, the VACO leadership was talking to and saw this amazing woodwork that was done by this Minnesota artisan. So that picture, what you can see in the stripes, are every single county in Virginia. So it's a beautiful carving. I'm unsure as to where it would go. I would love to kind of move it around from county to county so that we could see it and, and display it. So we'll have to talk about how that, what that's going to look like. We all attended, I think, Mr. Holland, I stood in for you, my brother, but we had the opportunity to participate. The students from Chesterfield County Public Schools got a sneak peek of local government today during the Model County Government Day. They attended a welcome reception, shadowed employees from numerous county departments, and discussed their experience during an afternoon luncheon. The program allows us, as local government, to better understand the community through the lens of our young people. Also, the luncheon, we recognized Dr. Lynn Bland, Secondary Social Studies Curriculum Specialist, who had helped plan this program. She'll be retiring with 35 years of service and education, so I just wanted to take a moment and thank Dr. Lynn Bland for all of her service. I have two upcoming conversations, one on December 2nd and one on December 10th. The focus of this conversation is to really look at, we've done a lot of changes with regard to recycling in our community. And I want to get an update, at least from my, but anybody is, can come, but I just want to get a sense of the community, what's working, what's not working, and I just want to have a community conversation that's just focused on recycling. So on December 2nd, 6:00 to 7:30, both of them are at the Midlothian Library, and then on December 10th, from 2:00 to 3:30. I also want to take a moment and recognize Mr. Holland for receiving the Political and Community Service Award during the Baptist General Convention of Virginia's Fall Season, Session. The convention, which celebrated their 125th anniversary, wanted to recognize Mr. Holland for your exceptional leadership, dedication, and commitment to our community. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. That brought up the feelings. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
And then finally, I want to share a video with everyone, but before I, I share it, I just want to talk about it for a moment. Our daughter just turned 25 years old, and she just wanted to spend time in the trees. And, you know, in the past, we have thought, okay, let's drive out to Shenandoah, or let's do that, but I've always wanted to go down to the Appomattox Trail system down there, and so we decided to go down there. And that area, if you've not been on the Appomattox Trail, and it was nice to kind of hang out in Matoka for a little while. I mean, it's really just absolutely wonderful. We had a beautiful day there. The river is a popular destination for rafting and canoeing, and particularly downstream is the dam, of course. We were just talking about the Appomattox Water Authority, you know, and, and what a fantastic, I mean, that's where we're getting some of our water from throughout the entire county. But I met a gentleman there by the name of Matthew Shute, and he was just hanging out playing his banjo. And I began to think about Parks and Rec and all that Parks and Rec does for us. I mean, quality of life, we definitely got that sense during COVID. And so I just want to kind of put a shout out to Parks and Rec, Clay Bowles, Neil Luther, and just their whole team. They do just such a great job. And so I also want to just share a reminder to everyone that in our fast-paced world, it is easy to overlook the small moments that bring us joy, despite the chaos and challenges that life throws our way. The most profound pleasure and contentment comes from the simplest pleasures. So I want to thank Michael for sharing your gift, and he is, man, he is good at bluegrass. Fantastic. All right. So that, on that mark, I am going to conclude my remarks, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, for sharing the music with us tonight. We appreciate it. The next report is, man, I have the great pleasure of serving as the chairman of the Capital Region Airport Commission, along with two of my colleagues, actually, three of my colleagues. I'm pleased to announce and share with you that for the fiscal year 2025 Airport Terminal Program Grant, our senior senator, Senator... our senior senator, Senator Warner, awarded us, presented us with a check for $2,225,000 to us, the members of the commission. The fund will, the funds and award will be designed for the proposed Consolidated Passenger Screening Checkpoint to make passenger flow more efficient and reduce congestion and enhance and reduce costs for TSA. So I'm very pleased that the senator is continuing to support the Capital Region Airport. And there we are, thank you. Next item. I had the great pleasure and honor of presenting remarks at the Veterans Day Ceremony, which was held at the Fairgrounds. This was a wonderful theme this year that we had, which was music of the military. We had a number of groups who participated. And later, we'll talk about tonight, two retiree, county employees retiring from the military as well. So we got a chance to thank them for their service as veterans. We thank all veterans, all veterans for their invaluable service and ongoing contributions to our community. And so I was very thankful to be at the event. In addition, I want to highlight as well the groups that supported that, such as Historical Society, Thomas Dale, as well as the Dale Roytan were participating in that as well. So thank you all for that, and thanks for those who were there. Wonderful, wonderful program that we put on each year. Also, I would like to invite you to our Second Annual Beulah Tree Lighting, which will, I know, second annual, which will celebrate the, the start of the holiday season on December the 6th from 5:45 to 7:00 p.m. We hope that you are all welcome, no matter which district you come from. I just wanted to share that tonight, so that you all are welcome. And I thank you for that. Yeah, there we go. And we're going to help buy her a tree too, next year. By the way, just to let you know. And that, that concludes my remarks. So thanks for coming out for that and for celebrating with us at the Beulah Rec Center. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Comments?
I think it's, it's important for the community to know that Mr. Holland not only chairs the Board of Supervisors here, but he also chairs the Airport Commission. And so he wears many hats in his role with us in the Board of Supervisors. And, Mr. Chair, I think it would be, you know, you touched on something, and I, I think it would be really great to get Perry Miller from the airport here at one of our meetings after the first of the year, to give an update on all of the wonderful capital improvements that are coming, and all of the good works that's going on in the airport, because there really is a lot of good information that we talk about in those meetings that not necessarily the community gets to hear about here. And so it'd be a great idea for you as the chair to perhaps talk with them about that.
And thank you for that suggestion. I appreciate it, and we will do just that, because we are not only improving exterior of the airport, we're improving inside, as I pointed out, with check lanes and others. And also, one mandate I have of Mr. Miller, and he'll probably talk about it, that he also improved the food as well at airports. So we're looking forward to some good food, some good local food at the International Airport. So I'm honored to serve as the chair of that. Thank you for noting that, Mr. Carroll, Madam Clerk.
Item 13, Resolutions and Special Recognitions. A, Resolution Recognizing Ms. Marie G. Lauer Mental Health Support Services Upon Her Retirement.
Okay.
Will Ms. Lauer and her guests, and Ms. Freed, please join the board and Dr. Casey on stage?
Ms. Lauer, come on down as well with your family. Thank you for bringing your family with you, because this is a family affair as well. Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Ms. Lauer, please, come, here's your resolution. For you. Come on, family, right in here, right in here. Come right in, families, make room for them. Hey there, how are you tonight? Good evening. So thanks for, first of all, thank you so much for being here, Ms. Freed, as well, over mental health. Madam Clerk, would you read your resolution?
Yes, sir.
So we might hear the great things you've been doing.
Whereas Ms. Marie G. Lauer retired from Chesterfield County Mental Health Support Services on August 1st, 2024, after providing outstanding service for 26 years. And whereas Ms. Lauer was hired by Chesterfield Department of Mental Health Support Services on August 10th, 1998, as a services supervisor with Chesterfield Employment Services. And whereas Ms. Lauer managed business partnerships and created expansion within employment sites.
That's okay.
And whereas Ms. Lauer managed and analyzed critical services data. And whereas Ms. Lauer created a new business, Cartridge Connections, to sustain employment for individuals with development disabilities. And whereas Ms. Lauer tirelessly served on the Environmental Safety Committee. And whereas Ms. Lauer joined the Mental Health Support Services Service Coordination Program as a support coordinator on September 14th, 2009. And whereas Ms. Lauer provided case management support for individuals with developmental disabilities. And whereas Ms. Lauer assisted in securing housing vouchers and flexible funding, which allowed individuals to live in the homes of their choice. And whereas Ms. Lauer connected individuals with disabilities to various community resources and activities fostering inclusion and promoting access to essential services and opportunities within the community. And whereas Ms. Lauer assisted in security, securing waiver funding for 15 individuals. And whereas Ms. Lauer dedicated her career to the advocacy of individuals with developmental disabilities and was committed to creating and supporting opportunities for individuals to work and live a life of their choosing, impacting them and their families. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Chesterfield County Board of Supervisors, this 13th day of November, 2024, publicly recognizes the outstanding contributions of Ms. Marie G. Lauer and extends appreciation on behalf of its members and the citizens of Chesterfield County. Congratulations upon her retirement, and best wishes for a long, happy, and healthy retirement. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Lauer, and that this resolution be permanently recorded among the papers of the Board of Supervisors of Chesterfield County, Virginia.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion? Been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, sign of aye. Ayes have it, so approved. Congratulations to you. Yeah, congratulations. We're not done yet. We're not, yeah, thank, we're not done yet. You come, come on back here, we're not done yet, and bring them on back in. But anyway, so I just want to thank you on behalf of this board and are very grateful, county, for the work you do for so many citizens. You make a tremendous difference in people's lives, and we thank you for that. And we congratulate you and your family on your retirement, so they'll certainly want to spend even more time with you. Hey there, how you doing? There you go, buddy. That's right. So, okay. And so, all right, thank you. There you go. Yeah. Thank you so much. And, and what I'd like to do is ask our vice chair, who has worked in mental health for many years, to also say something about Ms. Lauer. Dr. Miller.
It's good to see you. So I guess we worked together for four or five years. I mean, folks, what she was, is doing, is working with folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And really, what we're talking about is working with individuals so that they could live to fullest blossoming and greatest good. And to do that, it takes heart, and love, and patience, and patience, and patience. So thank you for your hard work and everything that you've done over the years. As a county, we couldn't be more grateful. And just deepest appreciation.
Thank you so very much. I have here Dr. K, Dr. K, oh, Kelly. Kelly first, Ms. Freed.
Marie, I just, on behalf of the Community Services Board, our staff, and especially all the families, as Dr. Miller was saying, that you've served, just want to thank you for your years. I've actually had the pleasure of working with you the entire time, and I remember Cartridge Connections and some of the programs like that that were developed. And, you know, being a service coordinator in your later years, people don't realize, aside from the services that you are trying to help families with, and it's hard for families to navigate the system, and, you know, it takes a special person like you to do that. But there's so much paperwork that goes behind the scenes. And so people don't realize the amount of time that service coordinators spend, having to do that in addition to serving families, and you've done it so well. So thank you so much, and we just wish you so much success in your retirement, and it looks like you're going to have a lot of fun, so.
Sure, I'll bring closure to this. On behalf of Chesterfield County, what I have here is a brick that has your name and your tenure with us. This is a brick for you and your family to probably display. Another brick will be placed in front of Historic Courthouse steps forevermore, with many peers that you probably remember working with over the years. And, and just as a reminder, all those wherestas, while they were individuals, and there were hundreds upon hundreds of them that you served, there's thousands upon thousands of families that were around that individual that really didn't know what they were going to do or when they were going to do it, or were aging out of being a caretaker. So on behalf of Chesterfield County, we are so grateful for your service and, and being a mentor for what is the foundations of even further people to do what you do here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all. And certainly, we would like to hear from you as to what you would like to share, and certainly your family here with you. And feel free to introduce them as well.
Thank you. I am, I am indebted to Chesterfield County to be honored this evening. Yes, I have worked tirelessly, but it has been with the direction of great leadership and folks who were committed to, again, providing the best quality care, support, and service to the people that we serve with disabilities in the community. So I am indebted for my time here as an employee at Chesterfield County, and it would not have been possible without the support and love and care of my family, which includes my husband, Bob, our daughter Jessica, and two grandsons who are here from New Zealand currently. So yes, we've got some Kiwis in the room. And then my, our daughter Katrina, her husband Rhett, and our other two grandchildren, who also have supported me throughout my career and journey. And I just want to, again, thank the leadership of Chesterfield County, and specifically Mental Health Support Services, and all that they've done with and for me so that I could be a successful employee in serving the citizens of the county. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so many. Join me and give her a hand. Thank you. 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 You can take that, this way. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And all the best. Enjoy your retirement. Don't let them forget it's candy. Okay. Yeah, all right, very good. Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you all. All, all the best. Yeah. All the best on your retirement. Madam Clerk, next item.
B, Resolution Recognizing Ms. Karen Baucher Mental Health Support Services Upon Her Retirement. Will Ms. Baucher and her guests please join the board, Dr. Casey, Ms. Freed, on the stage?
Welcome. Welcome to you both. Welcome. Welcome to you both. And here's your resolution, by the way. And thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read your resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Ms. Karen S. Baucher will retire from Chesterfield County Mental Health Support Services on December 1st, 2024, after providing outstanding service for over 33 years. And whereas Ms. Baucher was hired on June 10th, 1991, as a case manager with the Service Coordination Program. And whereas Ms. Baucher moved to Mental Health Support Services Clinical Services in the role of State Hospital Liaison in 1996, where she provided discharge planning to both the civil and forensic populations also serving as the NGRI Coordinator. And whereas Ms. Baucher was promoted to services supervisor in 2002 with the Supported Living Team, assisting individuals with serious mental health, secure and maintain affordable housing. And whereas Ms. Baucher supervised the Intensive Community Treatment Team and later transitioned that program into the Assertive Community Treatment Team. And whereas Ms. Baucher obtained her license as a professional counselor in the Commonwealth of Virginia in 2003. And whereas Ms. Baucher served as a certified pre-admission screening clinician for individuals in acute need of psychiatric hospitalizations. And whereas Ms. Baucher assisted in the implementation of two electronic health records, as well as provided extensive support during an industry-wide shift to managed care organization requirements and standards. And whereas Ms. Baucher was selected as the Mental Health Support Services Employee of the Year in both 2004 and 2013. And whereas Ms. Baucher assisted in the Mental Health Support Services adaptation to the global COVID-19 pandemic by rapidly shifting service delivery, ensuring continuing services while maintaining the safety of individuals and their families, as well as staff. And whereas Ms. Baucher was promoted to manager of the Psychiatric Rehabilitation Services Program in 2021, becoming responsible for the management of community mental health case management, ACT, and Chester House, to name a few. And whereas Ms. Baucher led the implementation of the Permanent Supportive Housing Program in 2022, bringing stable housing, as well as additional wraparound services to individuals, and leading the expansion of the program in 2024. And whereas Ms. Baucher, in various leadership roles, consistently demonstrated integrity, professionalism, compassion, ethical practice, and tirelessly advocated for individuals with mental illness. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Chesterfield County Board of Supervisors, this 13th day of November, 2024, publicly recognize the outstanding contributions of Ms. Karen S. Baucher and extends appreciation on behalf of its members and the citizens of Chesterfield County. Congratulations upon her retirement, and best wishes for a long, happy, and healthy retirement. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Baucher, and that this resolution be permanently recorded among the papers of the Board of Supervisors of Chesterfield County, Virginia.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion? Moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, sign of aye. Ayes have it, so approved. Congratulations on behalf of the county of Chesterfield for all you've done for so many citizens over those years you've worked with us. We thank you for your contributions and the impact on families and their family members is just, can be underscored. And we just applaud you and thank you for all that you do and have done. And certainly, I want to allow your director to say a word at this point regarding your work and your efforts there in the Mental Health Department.
Thank you. Karen, I don't even know where to start. It's been, you know, the things that were said in the resolution, people will never know the impact of the services that you've been involved with. I can remember 2005, us being in the boardroom or dining room or somewhere, starting our conversations about managed care. And our services are so much like healthcare organizations, and we were trying to figure out how in the world were we going to do that? And it's been almost 20 years now, and I can't imagine the thousands of authorizations that the program has done since then. But it's not just that, it's the Permanent Supportive Housing Program, Assertive Community Treatment. Those are critical services for people with mental health needs, and the impact on those families is tremendous. And you were a leader in, in a lot of those programs. So thank you very much on behalf of our agency and the Community Services Board, so.
You know the routine, I have a brick. It has your name on it. It's going in front of Historic Courthouse, but you get a copy as well. But it's more than that. I think it's great. I've been doing this for eight years, and I'm not sure we've had back-to-back mental health employees on stage. And, and between the two resolutions, you heard about 25 different wherestas. And what's amazing, they were all distinctive. And, and just as a further advocacy for the Mental Health Support Services, And and just as a further advocacy for the Mental Health Support Services, there's probably a thousand whereas's amongst all that they do for so many people in so many ways, in such a caring way. So thank you for being such a good public servant. Thank you as well. It's great to see. I mean, this is a good public service couple right here in front of us, too. So and it's now your turn to to share back to us.
Did not know I was going to have to public speak. That is not my forte. But I do want to thank everyone up here. And it's been a great run with the county. I've loved the work I've done. And the people that I've worked with is just tremendous. We do a lot of crazy things in mental health and really creative things, but it's been a great run. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Oh, and this is my husband, Tom. Sorry.
Thank you, Tom. Let's give him a hand, please. Thank you. Thank you so very much. We can never thank you enough for all you do for so many. And Tom, thank you for supporting her and being a part of all she has done over those years. We appreciate your support and love as well. So thank you all. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
C. Recognizing retiring veterans. Will Lieutenant Bivins, Deputy Davis, and their guests please join the board? And Dr. Casey on the stage.
All right. Come on down. Thank you, Lieutenant, for being here. I have this for you, sir. And I also have a challenge coin for you as well. Of course. And here's, where's Deputy Davis? All right, here. Come on in with family. Get next to family members. Boy, members, don't separate them. Let their families stay together there. Come on down. Come on down in. Come on in. Let's slide down. Yeah, come on in. Let's slide down. Come on in. All right. Everybody settle. Y'all settle. Here, I'm gonna give you this before we start.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Sergeant. All right, Colonel, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Holland, Dr. Casey, members of the board, just on behalf of Sheriff Leonard, men and women of the Chesterfield County Sheriff's Office, we thank you for this opportunity to recognize two of our veterans. And it's amazing how a simple conversation that Lieutenant Bivins had with Dr. Casey has has turned into this recognition. And how befitting is it on Veterans Day that we get to do this honor. Lieutenant Bivins is an 18-year employee with the Sheriff's Office. He had 30 years of service with the United States Marine Corps. He retired in January of this year. Career Deputy Mike Davis, 17 years with the Sheriff's Office, and he had a combined service of 21 years. Five with the Marine Corps, 16 with the Army National Guard, and he retired in May of this year. And you know, one thing on my note, I wanted to make sure I covered their names. There are family members that are here. His wife Christine, Lieutenant Bivins', his wife Christine, his daughter Landon, and his son Liam. And with Mike, his his wife Shawna, and his sons Corbin and Caleb. And I know you have other family members as well here and in the audience. We thank y'all for coming. And one note I had in our wrap-up, the topic I wanted to hit more than anything was service. Because you know, in a sacrificial service of a military person, I'm retired myself, and Mr. Holland, I know you were in the military. You serve. You sacrifice. You spend time away from loved ones. You go in harm's way, sometimes willing to give the ultimate sacrifice in your service. There's deployments. There's time out of the country where there's no contact. You don't know where they are, what they're doing, if they're okay or not. And those families walk through that sacrifice with you. I cannot think of how important our military spouses are, military families, the service you give back to us. You make us want to come home. You make us want to serve. You make us want to make it right. So we thank you to the families for doing that because you are what we serve for. So just thank you and congratulations on your retirement. And and I know you have many more years with the Sheriff's Office, but thank you for your military career and what you did for our country.
Thank you, Colonel. Madam Clerk. Okay. All right. Thank you. I would like to thank all of you for your service on behalf of Chesterfield County and a grateful community and nation for your serving our nation. On this Veterans Week, we talk about. So thank you so much for that, for you've made a difference, not only in your nation, but your community, Chesterfield. So thank you. And the family members, thank you for joining and being here with them. And of course, we have resolutions for you there. And we have challenge coins as well for you, Chesterfield County Challenge Coins. We're challenging each of you. But but thanks so very much for that, and we appreciate it. And when else have anything we want to say, we all said, we all said. All right. Well, give them a hand, if you would, please, for their service. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you on both fronts. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for joining us this evening. 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 All said, thank you, Colonel.
Yes, sir.
For presenting as well. That's okay. That's okay. All right. All right. That's good. That's good. That's good. All the best. Anything else? That's it? Is that it? One more?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it. I forgot what's next. Oh, I should write the Citizens Academy. I forgot about that. Yeah, I got some. Good. Everybody has one each. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
E. Recognizing 2024 Fall Government Citizens Academy graduates, Ms. Dale.
All right. Welcome.
Okay, that was very surprising to hear since I just got married.
Okay. Congratulations, Ms. Dale.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Casey.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I know, y'all. On September 11th, the fall session of Government Citizens Academy began, hosted by Community Engagement and Resources. The Government Citizens Academy provides a hands-on learning opportunity and is designed to enhance and grow the county's communication efforts and increase citizen engagement. Citizens learn about their local government and interact with a wide variety of departments and programs. And most important, provide us with important feedback on how we're doing. Today marks the completion of the ninth session of the academy since it began in 2017. And to date, we've graduated over 240 participants, with the 22 graduating today. So I want to thank you all for your participation in the academy and thank all the participants for their commitment to nine weeks of class, three hours long. They were flexible. It's a great class. They were so flexible, engaged, and asked the best questions, and it was a real joy to serve them. And I'm going to invite up Bob Santos. He's going to talk about the class a little bit before we bring up the graduates.
Thank you. Welcome.
I want to begin by inviting all of you to our yard for our Christmas tree lighting. We'll be having a banjo player. No, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I just want to share briefly from two perspectives. On a personal level, my son and his wife moved here in 2014. He became a firefighter with the county. And my wife and I followed two years ago. We had very deep roots in Indiana County, Pennsylvania. And so for us, the move was a major upheaval of our lives. And we've met some wonderful people on our neighborhood through church involvement. But it's hard to feel at home in an unfamiliar place. And so the academy for me has really helped me turn the corner to be able to call Chesterfield County home. And so I thank you for all of that. I also want to represent our group and to say that we really appreciate Dr. Casey and all of you, and Kelly doing a great job taking initiative with this program. It provided a new perspective of everything that the county has to offer. It helped us to see the whys and the hows of some of the things that go on behind the scenes. The speakers were all great. Everyone was knowledgeable. They were personable. They were open-minded. We appreciated and valued the transparency of the county representatives who spoke and who presented. The PowerPoint presentations were really helpful, very well done. The county website is excellent. It's very well done. Visiting the various locations was a big plus. The Communication Center was especially a hit. I think everybody wanted to just kind of camp out and hang out there for a while. It's a, it was very impressive. Finally, two words I think best describe the department heads that we were able to meet. And those words would be caring and competent. Caring and competent. Of course, everybody wants to live in a place that is well-run. You want to be able to like the place that you call home. You want it to be prosperous. And so that's a big plus. But it also means a lot to know that you have leaders who care, who genuinely care and are passionate about serving the community well. And so we were especially touched by that. And really, that's the common ground that draws us all together. We know that we have a wide variety of backgrounds, perspectives, opinions, and all of those types of things. But we all care deeply about Chesterfield County. And so we want to thank you for opening the windows that we could peer in and see how things work and opening the doors so that we could enter in and experience things and be involved and be able to share our voices. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much for sharing. Give them a hand for that. Outstanding.
I don't pay these people to say this stuff.
Yeah.
They do it for themselves.
Yeah.
And now we're going to bring up our graduates.
Absolutely.
I'm going to start with Veronica Baker.
All right. Ms. Baker.
Brian Brown. Nelson Clugston. Eleanor Eads. William Gay.
Come right on in. Thank you.
Nancy Glom.
Got your pen. Thank you.
Stanley Glom.
Thank you. Welcome.
Georgia Harrington.
Oh, you got one? Good.
Thomas John.
Okay. Wonderful.
Lydia Konisky.
There you go. Yes, sir. Thank you. Got your pen.
Richard Latham.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Pleasure's mine indeed. You have a pen?
Deborah McLeod.
I have this one.
You have this? That's the same thing.
Alicia Meredith.
Thank you so much.
Ruth Moses.
Thank you so very much. I got, I got them covered. I got them. Come on. I have pens for you. See, I'm here for you.
Hondo Monday.
I'm here for you.
Jennifer Patterson.
Hi.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Robert Parish.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Here's a pen for you.
Susan Robertson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Santos.
Thanks much. Thank you.
Mary K. Waldron.
Give her a pen.
And Janet Weaver.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And welcome. It's good to see you again. Hi. It's great to see you again. Uh-oh, let's get your pen. Thank you. Come right on in here. Welcome. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. There's your pen.
Yeah. Hello. Thank you. We got a pen here. Yeah, come on. Yeah, come on, boy. Welcome. She has a pen for you. All right. Wonderful. Hi there. Yeah, thank you for speaking on behalf of your class.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's, okay, we can shift. Yeah, shift on down. Come on, boy. You can hang in right over there. A spot right over here for you. Come on in. Come on in. Come on in. We want to take a picture of you as well as. Yeah, there we go. Fall right in. Fall right in. Right here, sir. There's a certain point right there, sir. Well, great. Thank, everybody all set. Well, first of all, I just want to thank each of you for taking on the mission possible, the Citizens Government Academy. I want to thank your leaders who participated in this as well because when I met with you all, you had some great questions here, and I was still reeling from them, some of those great questions. And I'm so glad you are examples of what we call ambassadors for Chesterfield County. You can spread the word and continue to allow others to take on this opportunity so that they may learn more about Chesterfield County, what it does. And and as stated there, we want to capture those comments about well-run county, managed county. We love those comments. Thank you so much for that. We love to hear that. And if there's anything we can improve, we look to you to help us make that decision and make the step to improve because our goal is excellence in everything we do, in service, in delivery of service, and in making this county the very best it can be. So I thank you all for your support. We thank you all for attending the class, spending your valued time in learning, and for sharing with others. If you have other ideas later, you can call back and share them with us. We're looking forward to hearing from you always as graduates. And each of you received a pen of our symbol, if you will, county symbol, 1749, when the county was founded, 275 years ago, Chesterfield County. So again, we thank you on behalf of all other board members. Thank you. And other citizens as well. Thank you all for being here. And if there's anyone else has anything to say, or you'd like to add a comment, something you're just burning to get out, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give you one moment, but one moment in time. Okay, anyone else? If not, give them a hand, please, and thank them. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You okay? Thank you. Thank you all for being here. And thank you, team, and thank you, Ms. Dale, as well. Ms. Conley, thank you for your leadership in executing this program, for the great work you've done as well. Thank you all. Thanks for being here. Great, great, y'all. Enjoy. Enjoy. Thank you for everything. Enjoy. Thank you for everything. Enjoy. Thank you so much. You're done. Good. All right. Good. Thank you all so very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item 14, new business. A. Approve the First Amendment to the Existing Grant Agreement with DuPont Specialty Products USA LLC entered into on February 21st, 2020. Mr. Elder.
Good evening. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Casey, here to share the exciting news that some of you had the opportunity to tour DuPont's facility earlier this year and saw the work that they had done on their most recent expansion. $188 million investment in our community. That plant has been in Chesterfield for nearly 100 years. This grant agreement was executed previously. It actually was done during COVID timeframe. And so the state amended their performance grant to extend the performance date. This amendment to the local match requirement and grant agreement simply changes the performance date. They far exceeded what our estimates were in investment at that location. And at this location specifically, the expansion was related to their Kevlar line. So a very critical sector within the national defense. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the amendment.
Questions or comments, board members? Hearing none. May I have a motion? Should approve. Amendment.
Second.
Been moving properly second. Any additional comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. That's approved. Thank you for being here.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate you. Good work. Great work. Madam Clerk.
B. Appointments. We have one appointment to the Towing Advisory Board.
Okay. May I have a motion, members? Motion approved and second. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Approved. Next item.
We have one appointment to the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee.
Motion approved.
It's been second. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much for that.
C. Consent items. Mr. Chair, there have been no requests to remove items from the consent agenda for public comment.
Okay, members, board members, do you have any items you wish to remove and or comment on at this time? If not, please give me a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved. Properly second. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Consent agenda is now approved. Thank you very much. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 15, 15-minute citizen comment period on unscheduled matters. This time is designated for citizens to talk to the Board of Supervisors. It is not a time for dialogue with board members, and it is not a question-answer period. Those conversations can easily occur with individual board members outside of the board meeting. As a reminder, the board's procedures state, "No citizen shall speak on any matter of business that is a subject on the board's agenda for that day, and each speaker shall have three minutes to address the board." We have three speakers. I'll call them all forward if they'll please speak in this order. Doug Bradham, Sandra Shell, and Edwin Whitehead.
Thank you. Please come forward and share your name and your comments, please.
Good evening.
Good evening to you.
My name's Doug Bradham. I've lived in Midlothian District of Chesterfield County for over 40 years. This year, I received a 10.8% increase in my residential property tax from Chesterfield County, resulting in what is now a 30.8% increase in my property taxes over five years, or an average of 6.1% per year. In discussions with my neighbors and friends that live in Chesterfield County, In discussions with my neighbors and friends that live in Chesterfield County, they advise their property taxes have increased about the same amount, and they were very upset with the board and county management for allowing this to happen. As a result, I decided to conduct an investigation regarding the spending history of Chesterfield County. Management is approved by you, the Board of Supervisors. So, county spending data was obtained under the Freedom of Information Act, which included line item actual spending by department for 2017 through 2024, and this data was analyzed over a four-month period. Total spending by the county over the past five years has increased by 48%. The USA inflation rate increased by 21% over the same time period. The Chesterfield County spending for education over this time period, the Chesterfield portion of it, increased by 23%, or about the same rate as the rate of inflation. Over this time period, the county population increased by 10%, but county spending per resident increased by 34%, much higher than the rate of inflation. Based on this analysis, the only conclusion that can be reached is that over the past five years, spending by the county has been out of control, resulting in the need for very significant increases in property taxes, much higher than the USA inflation rate. You, the Board of Supervisors, were elected by your respective district constituents to be the defenders of the taxpayers, making sure that only necessary spending is occurring and making sure that taxes of any kind are not allowed to increase at a disorbitant rate. Spending and taxation levels should be the Board of Supervisors' main focus. The Board of Supervisors is totally in control of spending and the amount of property tax to be paid by setting the tax rate to be applied to the appraised value of the property. The 1.1% reduction in the tax rate this year was an insignificant amount of reduction compared to the dramatic increase in the assessed property values that occurred in 2024. In my case, that was 10.8%. I've been involved in meeting with Mark Miller and Matt Harris on two occasions to discuss the results of this spending analysis. Their willingness to meet and have meaningful discussions have been much appreciated. Thank you, Mark. They both have copies of the analysis I prepared. Jim Holland, it's very disappointing that you would not meet with us to go through this since you're the chairman of the Board of Supervisors and you set the agenda. You're also a CPA and the best qualified of anybody up here to understand this analysis and know what it says.
Mr. Bradham. Sir?
Another concern, I understand. I understand.
Let him go on. Give him a little more time.
Another... I'll be through in a second here. Another concern I have expressed to Mark and Matt is that there is no formal cost-reduction slash continuous improvement program in place for the county. I've sent a report to them explaining why this is important and describing how county management can implement one of these programs. Now, special concerns that hundreds of millions, if not billions, of dollars that have been spent by the county on economic development, there appears to be no return on investment for county residents as a result of all this spending. I hope the Board of Supervisors and county management will take my comments as constructive and will take appropriate action to control, or better yet, reduce spending and reduce the burden of the high property taxes on Chesterfield County residents. Please contact me if you have any questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate your analysis. Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you all.
Good evening. Welcome.
Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Holland.
Supervisor Holland and county administrator and fellow homeowners. I've been in Chesterfield County, lived in Chesterfield County since 1979, and my homeowner's taxes this year was, I guess this is a ditto of what the gentleman just said, 2024 taxes were $5,400 and just, you know, I know my value's going up, but I can't afford to move, so, you know, I don't know. It just keeps going up. I would rather see this tax dollar money go to mental health and drug rehabilitation programs, or I'm sure so many worthy programs out there, rather than going to the salary of one man. In 2023, Dr. Joseph Casey Jr. earned an annual salary of $336,600, according to public records. I understand, let's see, that he has another pay raise that just came and probably something more for 2025. That's a 485% higher than median salary in Chesterfield County and 110% higher than the average county administrator's salary in anyone anywhere in Virginia. So, you know, the governor makes $175,000 a year in 2023. President Biden earned $400,000 in 2023. So, I questioned this exorbitant salary to Supervisor Kevin Carroll, and he said that Dr. Casey was the hardest-working man he knew. But, you know, my, I just, like I said, ditto, I just, I don't understand that exorbitant tax, and I don't know how many of you are Republican, but it's hard to say we're conservatives and we spend money like this on a salary for... Yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking. Welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Casey, my name is Edwin Whitehead. I am with the Injustice Reform Network, and I'm here today to raise concerns on how our school district, in collaboration with the Chesterfield Police Department, treats students in disciplinary matters. The practice is outlined in the memorandum of understanding and the recent limitations of our First Amendment rights to address this board. First, I'd like to address the treatment of students as adults in disciplinary situations within our schools. Too often, minor infractions lead to severe consequences that don't align with supportive learning environments schools should provide. Treating students as adults, particularly with regard to law enforcement involvement, fails to recognize the developmental stages of youth. These actions can permanently damage students' lives, affecting their educational progress and future opportunities. Schools should nurture, not criminalize, students, creating pathways for growth, not obstacles to success. Regarding this MOU between CCPS and the Chesterfield Police Department, I really urge this board to look critically and examine the use of force and arrest practices. We know that nationwide data shows us and reveals that this disproportionately impacts marginalized students more than anything else, feeding to the school-to-prison pipeline and creating fear rather than safety. The MOU should really prioritize trauma-informed approaches and clear guidelines for de-escalation, making arrest a very last resort and promoting student-focused, non-punitive responses. The Injustice Reform Network is very open and readily available to work in concert with this board to fix these matters and making sure that these policies work for both the staff and our students. Lastly, I want to address the importance of our First Amendment rights in bringing grievances to this board. Recently, the U.S. Supreme Court upheld these rights in a ruling from Arizona, affirming that public bodies cannot unduly restrict the community's right to raise complaints and speak out on policies. When this board restricts the ability to discuss certain issues, it is not only silencing community concerns, but also undermining democratic principles and accountability. Open dialogue and transparency are the bedrock of trust between this board and the community it serves. I urge this board to revisit not only the MOU with Chesterfield Police Department, ensure policies to support the students' rights and growth, and reaffirm community's right to bring concerns directly before this board. Please let's work together more often and in concert to facilitate doing this for a safe environment, for our kids, and for every single person, not in just Chesterfield County, but to reflect this all over this Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Have you had a chance, sir, just one question, to speak to the school board?
We actually were at the meeting with them yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, no problem at all.
Appreciate your sharing with them as well.
Not a problem. That's what we're supposed to do.
Ma'am Clerk.
Item 16, deferred items from previous meetings. We have none. Item 17, zoning cases. A deferrals. We have one deferral. Case 24 SN 1209 in Matoka Magisterial District. Magnolia Green Track CC Amendment is a request for amendment of zoning approval, case 89 SN 0343, relative to phasing requirements and modification of development standards in a residential R9 district on 88.11 acres along the north side of Hull Street Road, approximately 250 feet west of Magnolia Green Parkway. The district supervisor is requesting a deferral to the board's first regularly scheduled meeting in January 2025.
All right. Thank you, ma'am clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the deferral of case 24 SN 1209 Magnolia Green Track CC Amendment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this deferral of this case? If so, please come forward and share your name with us. I thought he was coming this way, but anyway. No problem. This public hearing is now closed. This case is located in the Matoka District. Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to defer case 24 SN 1209 to the board's first regularly scheduled meeting in January. And, you know, unfortunately, we have not set, or at least not voted, on the schedule for next year. I think there's a proposed date, but I would move that we move it to that.
This would be the first regular meeting at which you would be considering zoning. Yes. Yeah, because we do have an organizational meeting. Correct. And will be the second meeting of January. That's my understanding. Thank you very much.
I would say the second meeting, Mr. Chair, would be my motion.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moving properly second. Any additional comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of this deferral, please say aye.
Aye.
As have it, that deferral is done, approved.
C, consent cases. For the benefit of the public, consent cases are those cases where the applicant accepts staff's recommendation and there is no previous opposition. For each case on the consent agenda, staff has received written confirmation from the applicants that they agree with the conditions being imposed and that all proppers are offered in compliance with state law. First is 24 MH 1180 in Bermuda Magisterial District. Temple manufactured home permit renewal is a request for renewal of manufactured home, case 17 SN 0133, to permit a temporary manufactured home in a residential R7 district known as 2701 Shields Road. The property has been kept in compliance with conditions imposed by the Board of Supervisors in the last approval in 2017. Staff recommends approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 24 MH 1180, Temple Manufactured Home Permit Renewal. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this case? If so, please come forward and share your name with us at this time. This public hearing is now closed, and this case is located in the Bermuda District. Mr. England.
Make the motion... Excuse me. Make the motion to approve case 24 MH 1180, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second. It's been moving properly second. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it, that case is approved. Thank you. Next item.
Next is 22 SN 044 in Midlothian Magisterial District. Old Otterdale Road Residential Rezoning is a request to rezone 16.98 acres from Agricultural A to Residential R12 with conditional use plan development to permit exceptions to ordinance requirements. A single-family development with up to 34 dwellings is proposed. Planning, commission, and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 22 SN 0044, Old Otterdale Road Residential Res zoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case at this time? If so, please come forward and share your name. Ain't no one come forward. This public hearing is now closed, and this is in the Midlothian District. Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an interesting use of property here. The... It's not a big property. It's right up on 288. And I spent a lot of time with it. You're going to notice in the case that they're asking for a lot of exemptions. The exemptions are really to move it away from 288, to kind of put in those kind of barriers for sound and those kind of things, and also to add additional green space. So, it's a unique property. I've had a lot of time to kind of wrestle with it. I think that at one point, they were going to put in a bunch of apartments, and folks that are living right next door, you can see to the bottom of that slide in front of you, that they were concerned about that, and the developer's been very good to work with and to figure out a way to make this property work. And so, I feel really comfortable with this particular case. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and move for the approval of case 22 SN 044, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moving properly second. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it, that case is approved. Thank you.
Next is 22 SN 0141 in Bermuda Magisterial District. Eads Two Chair Salon is a request for a conditional use to permit a salon from the home on a 1.85-acre property in an Agricultural A district known as 3706 Louise Drive. The applicant is proposing continued operation of a two-chair beauty shop incidental to a residential dwelling. Planning, commission, and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 22 SN 0141, E2 Chair Salon. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this case at this time? If so, please come forward and share your name. Seeing no one, this public hearing is now closed now. This is located in the Bermuda District.
Make the motion to approve case 22 SN 0141, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second.
It's been moving properly second. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it, that case is approved, as noted.
Next is 23 SN 0131 in Matoka Magisterial District. Spring Run Road Apartments Amendment is a request for amendment of zoning approval, case 16 SN 0554, to modify the master plan, uses, and development standards in a multifamily residential RMF district on 13.72 acres located on the east side of North Spring Run Road, approximately 700 feet south of Hull Street Road. An age-restricted development consisting of a maximum of 136 multifamily dwellings is proposed. The previous zoning approval, case 16 SN 0554, is being amended to remove a previously-approved condominium tract of 36 dwelling units in multiple buildings and combine these dwellings into a single multifamily building. No additional residential density is proposed with this request. Planning, commission, and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 23 SN 0131, Spring Run Road Apartments. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this case at this time? If so, please come forward and share your name. Seeing no one, this case is public hearing is now closed. This is located in the Matoka District.
Mr. Chair, this case does not... It basically changes the type of product that's on there, but doesn't increase the density. I make a motion to approve 23 SN 0131, as in the conditions as illustrated in the staff report.
Okay. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it, that case is approved. Thank you. Mr. Carroll, next case.
Next is twenty-four SN one-zero-eight-nine in Bermuda Magisterial District. Enon Corner Multifamily and Townhouse Resoning is a request to rezone from Agricultural A and Community Business C-three to residential townhouse RTH with conditional use plan development to permit exceptions to ordinance requirements on twenty-nine-point-nine-four acres located at the east side of the East Hundred Road and North Enon Church Road intersection. A townhouse development with neighborhood recreational amenities is proposed. Residential density would be limited to a maximum of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine townhouse dwelling units. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case two-four SN one-zero-eight-nine, Enon Corner Townhouse Resoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this case at this time? And if so, please come on down. Mr. Taylor. As usual, you familiar with stating your name?
Good evening, I'm Jerry Turner. I really don't have a problem with this project. Other than the sidewalks. There are no sidewalks on some of the major roads. We're trying to get a sidewalk built on Fordham. It's going to cost us eight-hundred dollars, eight-hundred dollars a foot because the county's doing it. This contractor could probably do it a whole lot cheaper. So y'all need to start making these contractors provide sidewalks on these busy roads that the county is eventually going to have to pay for. Because sooner or later, the county's going to have to put a sidewalk there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any other speakers? Sir, please come and share your name if you would. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Bill Ray Johnson. I'm an adjoining landowner to this project.
Okay.
Um, you're only given fifty feet border on my three-acre line. I was wondering if you could consider more than that, so I have a little more peace and quiet right there. I've been there almost forty years. I've got people on that road, Burgess Road, that have been there for forty, fifty years. I got eighty-year-olds that I go up and down and check on a lot. If you could move that border more than fifty feet over, I would really appreciate that. And I'm also the president of Hope Well Optimist Club. We're getting ready to open up our Christmas tree lot the day after Thanksgiving. If you would like to come down, I will personally take you around to our one-hundred-and-sixty trees and we can pick you out something. And I won't charge you the double taxes that I'm getting charged for living in Chasfield County. So keep that in mind. We open up the day after Thanksgiving. And I'm the president, just ask for me and I'll be glad to take you for a little tour.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Any other speakers? Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. And this is located in the Bermuda District. Mr. Engel, I'm not sure what your negotiations included, but a comment regarding sidewalks and regarding moving a line.
Can the applicant come forward?
Where is the applicant? Please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Jeff Geiger, here on behalf of the applicant. I appreciate Mr. Engel's invitation to come down. I'd like to just make two quick comments, if that's okay with Mr. Engel. First, I would like you to know that we have worked closely with our neighbors. We held two community meetings. And one of the results of the requests that they had of us was a fence along the fifty-foot line. So it's not only just a fifty-foot buffer, but we will be providing them an opaque screened fence to further screen the townhouses from their homes.
How tall is that fence?
Six foot?
Six foot solid fence?
Board on board, sir.
And it's going to be on the fifty-foot line or is it going to be on my line?
It'll be right on the property line.
On my property?
No, sir.
What do you mean? What do you mean? It's got to either be on my line or fifty foot away. Which, which one is it?
I'll go put it right on the property line.
Right on my property line?
On my property.
Well, my property line is your property line. What are you talking about?
Sir, sir, he's, I think he's trying to be very clear about, there is a property line.
It'll be just, it'll be just off of your property line on their property. Is that correct, sir?
Thank you.
Mr. Geiger, is that correct? It'd be on your property, but just beyond his property.
Correct.
Yeah.
So how far is that off my property line?
We'll decide that when we get the plan to review and build it. It won't, it won't, it won't be on your property and it'll be maintained by the HOA.
Okay. I'm just curious which way he was going to go with that.
Hmm.
He didn't give me no dimensions. I'm a dimension counting guy.
No problem. Yep. Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger.
And, real quick, Mr. Chair, we, we did look at putting sidewalks on Route ten. You've got a flood plain through there, so there wasn't an opportunity to put a sidewalk. And then we did have a lot of conversations about the sidewalk on Enon Church. A sidewalk is not required with the subdivision to the north. And so with the conversations about providing sidewalks on the inside and some other adjustments that were made, we elected not to provide sidewalks along Enon Church because it wouldn't go anywhere.
Okay. Mr. Engel, are you satisfied?
Do you have a question more?
I understand. So what I think I heard, Mr. Geiger, you said was that because the subdivisions around it don't have the sidewalks, it doesn't make sense to put in the sidewalks there. Did I follow that?
Correct. The, the land to the north here is currently being created for a subdivision and there is no sidewalk here. And so there is nothing to link to.
Okay, do you, do you think that the developer, I'm just going to ask a question for you, would be amenable to putting in sidewalks if that were something that Mr. Engel was interested in?
I think we're, we would ask for consideration that there are some other goals here to provide housing at a price point that's attainable to the employees that you're bringing in. And we would ask that, you know, it not be at expense that these future homeowners will have to pay for.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My understanding is that this will connect to the next neighborhood, which will also go back to Route ten. So it wouldn't be a straight walk up ten, but you would have a path where you could go from one neighborhood on a sidewalk through the other neighborhood to get to the other end, so that you don't have it along the road, but you have a safe path to get there. So I was okay with that.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, that was my question, is that, it looks like there's sidewalks on the inside of this project. Is that correct?
Yes. One of the things we did was we bought additional land here so that we could make this connection in, not only for vehicular, but also for pedestrian connection and flow between the two subdivisions.
All right. Any more comments, Mr. Geiger?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, sir, for being here. This public hearing is now closed. This now in the Bermuda District. Mr. Engel, would you like to do?
I'm going to make a motion in a second. I, I would like to just say that I had talked with many people from Burgess Road and honestly, until just now, I, I was unaware that there was even anybody that was still upset. So in the future, if you have objection, please reach out to your planning commissioners and your board members sooner. I don't know if you spoke up at the planning commission, but I hadn't heard from anybody prior to this. To the best of my knowledge, everything had, I mean, I know there was multiple people on Burgess Road that had reached out to me.
You didn't reach out to me? I live on Burgess Road.
I didn't reach out to any of the people on Burgess Road, sir. They reached out to me. And last I heard from everybody was that as long as we didn't bring the road out to Burgess Road, everybody was good with that.
Give kudos for that. I give you kudos. Leave us alone. We barely got enough room for a school bus going up through there.
We're going to fix that too. I'm working on that as well. We're going to get you a turnaround at the end of Burgess Road.
So we are, we are really happy with that part. I'm just worried about where his fence is.
I understand. It will not be on your property. That I will promise you, it will not be on your property.
I have to give kudos to the people for staying off of Burgess Road. That was my main objective for my meetings that I had. And I appreciate that part, for sure.
Thank you, sir. With that, I make the motion to approve case twenty-four SN one-zero-eight-nine, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second. It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it, that case is approved. Thank you. Next case, ma'am clerk.
Next is twenty-four SN one-one-two-four in Clover Hill Magisterial District. Craver Setback Reduction is a request for a conditional use plan development to permit exceptions to ordinance requirements in a residential R-seven district on one-point-zero-five acres known as two-three-two-four Polkashock Boulevard. The applicant proposes to subdivide the property into two single-family lots. The subdivision process requires a thirty-five-foot buffer for new residential subdivisions. The applicant is requesting an exception to permit the existing dwelling to achieve a setback of three-point-nine-two feet from the buffer. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case two-four SN one-one-two-four, Craver Setback Reduction. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case at this time? If so, please come forward and share your name.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Turner.
Good evening.
I came to y'all last month about this very thing. These contractors coming in there and subdividing these older neighborhoods that were built on one- and two-acre lots and dividing them into half-acre lots, one-acre lots, whatever they can, as many of the houses things jam on that property. In order to make it work, they got to come to y'all and get some, some relief on some of the requirements. You have got to stop affecting these older neighborhoods because they don't have a HOA. They're leaving it up to you guys to protect their property. And you're not doing a very good job of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. That's all the speakers. This public hearing is now closed. This case is in the Clover Hill District. Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I know that my planning commissioner had had some conversations with some of the neighbors and voiced their, their concerns. And again, because this is on a corner, this is not in the interior of this stretch of homes, I, that was the only reason that I am okay with this setback. And they will have to come in and have all the proper setbacks for the house that they will put on it when they do their planning. So I just feel that there was a lack of communication from the applicant. And sometimes it's just nice to be a good neighbor, so it, it gets a long way sometimes. So with that, I will approve S-two-four SN one-one-two-four with the proposed staff recommendations.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been approved and properly second. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it. Thank you very much. That case is approved.
Next is twenty-four SN one-one-three-zero in Dale Magisterial District. Iron Bridge Heating and Air is a request for conditional use to permit a contractor's office plus conditional use plan development to permit exceptions to ordinance requirements in an Agricultural A district on one-point-two-eight acres known as five-five-one-two Iron Bridge Road. A heating and air business has operated on the property. The previously approved timeframe of ten years is expiring and the applicant wishes to renew prior zoning approval, case fourteen SN zero-five-eight-six. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case two-four SN one-one-three-zero, Iron Bridge Heating and Air. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this case at this time? If so, please come forward and share your name. If not, this public hearing is now closed. This is in Dale District. I therefore move approval of the case as presented with the associated conditions for this particular contractor.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it, that case is approved. Thank you.
Next is twenty-four SN one-one-nine-five in Midlothian Magisterial District. Home Away From Home Care Services is a request for conditional use to permit group care facility in a residential R-seven district on a point-two-one acre parcel known as six-five-three-nine North Stevens Hollow Drive. A group care facility to permit the full-time care for a maximum of four adolescent youths ages thirteen to seventeen is proposed. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case two-four SN one-one-nine-five, Home Away From Home Care Services. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this case at this time? Seeing no one, this public hearing is now closed and this is located in the Midlothian District. Thank you. Yep. This case, this public hearing is closed and it's in the Midlothian District. Mr. Supervisor.
So this is an interesting case in that the individual will be living in the property. I think it's really important to recognize that. And to, to be a place where, so some thirteen-to-seventeen-year-old, all adolescents can live there, be well-supervised. And this is something I think that they were thinking about doing. They never kind of brought it up after COVID. Now they're coming back in. It'll be good for three years, is my understanding. So if it's not going well, we can take another look at this. But I feel comfortable with this particular plan and I'm going to work with it. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and move approval of case number two-four SN one-one-nine-five, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second. It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
That case is approved. Thank you.
Next is twenty-four SN one-two-zero-zero in Bermuda Magisterial District. Henshaw Gray Ledge Boulevard Two-Lot Subdivision is a request to rezone from residential R-twelve and Agricultural A to residential R-twelve on two-point-zero-nine acres known as seven-zero-six Gray Ledge Boulevard. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into two residential lots. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case two-four SN one-two-zero-zero, Henshaw Gray Ledge Boulevard Two-Lot Subdivision. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case at this time? Seeing no one, this public hearing is now closed and this is located in the Bermuda District. Mr. Engel.
Make the motion to approve case twenty-four SN one-two-zero-zero, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. Thank you. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it, that case is approved. Thank you.
Last is twenty-four SN one-two-two-nine in Midlothian Magisterial District. Adrenas Parlor Tattoo Shop is a request for conditional use for a tattoo shop on a point-five-one acre parcel known as nine-one-one North Courthouse Road. The tattoo shop known as Adrenas Parlor LLC is proposing to locate in an existing commercial condominium unit and will also operate a barber shop out of the two-story space. The barber shop is a by right permitted use in a community business C-three district and is not the subject of this application. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case two-four SN one-two-two-nine, Adrenas Parlor Tattoo Shop. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this case at this time? Seeing no one come forward, this public hearing is now closed and this is located in the Midlothian District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a very kind of awkward office space, condominium space, but office space right on Courthouse Road. I would like to see this be successful and I'm hoping Adriana's Tattoo Shop could make that work. That would be wonderful. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and approve, move to approve the case number two-four SN one-two-two-nine, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second. It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it, that case is approved. Thank you. Dr. Miller. Next item, ma'am clerk.
Mr. Chair, that concludes your consent cases for this evening. You have no discussion cases or public hearings on your agenda this evening. Item eighteen, fifteen-minute citizen comment period on unscheduled matters. We have no speakers.
Speakers, okay.
Mr. Chair, we need a motion to adjourn to the police chief's swearing-in ceremony on November nineteenth at five PM at the Beulah Recreation Center, to then adjourn to the county schools joint legislative meeting on December third at eight-thirty AM at the Beulah Recreation Center, to then adjourn to the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting on December eighteenth at two PM in room five-oh-two of the county administration building.
So moved? Okay.
Second.
Moving probably second, all those in favor of adjuring to those associated locations, they have been known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it. And there's no other items to come before this board. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a wonderful evening and thank you all for your patience out there. We appreciate you, community. Thanks for all you do. Thank you, ma'am clerk. Thank you as well.